... indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming this evening. All are present, including our new student council rep, who I believe Samantha will introduce shortly. And we still have our open seat, but we'll be taking care of that soon. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? By Stacy, second.
Second.
By Tom. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six zero. Next on our agenda is the appointment of a replacement for the board seat vacated by Eric Pratt. The board met earlier, well, actually last month, to discuss who we could ask to be that replacement. And one of the things that was important to the board is that it was someone who had been a board member previously, so had some experience, so that they were kind of, could hit the ground running a little bit. And we have asked Martha Hoover if she would be interested in serving this term until December 31st, 2012, so just till the end of this year. And she said yes. So I'd, I believe I should take a vote for that, don't I? Do I have a motion to accept that decision?
Some move.
By Todd, second. By Rich. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six zero. And I know Martha's in the audience, so we'll ask her to come forward.
Can't sit down yet, Martha. I get to read this long paper.
It is an honor that you were appointed to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and the other members of the school board in a position of being morally and legally responsible for equitable quality education for every student in the district. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board, with extensive participation of the community, envisions the community's educational future and then formulates goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for public schools. To achieve the vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because as a board, you must be accountable to the community, you must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children. As a board member, you serve as education's key advocate on behalf of students and our community's schools to advance the vision of our schools. Furthermore, you must strive to work together and with the superintendent and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills and knowledge, citizenship, and personal development.
Shortly I'll have you sign the oath of office. But right now, if you would raise your hand, your right hand, and repeat after me. I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
And I will discharge faithfully.
The duties of the office of school board member.
The duties of the office of school board member.
Of Independent School District 719.
Of Independent School District 719.
For the best of my judgment and ability.
For the best of my judgment and ability.
Perfect.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Okay, next on our agenda is the consent agenda. Included there is the check wire transfer dispersment summary, board meeting minutes from August 6th and August 20th, donations as follows. Dictionaries from the Prior Lake and Burnsville Alliance for all third graders in the district. School supplies from the Fairview Ridge's Hospital, school supply drive for our district. Thirty dollars from Angel Sherrett for technology at Hidden Oaks Middle School. Twenty dollars and two cents from Laura Willett for technology at Hidden Oaks Middle School. Three hundred dollars from World Architects and Engineers for the Laker Athletic Booster Club. Donations from the Wells Fargo Community Support Campaign for Jeffers Pond. Of four hundred and seven dollars and thirty-one cents from Jane Campan. And sixty-six dollars from Shane and Abby Cuchera. The reservation, I'm sorry. Resignations, terminations, and non-renewals as listed. I believe that's it. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Some move.
By Mike, second.
Second.
By Stacy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven zero. Now we'll move on to our Laker pride, special recognition, I believe.
Yes, it is. And we have our Laker Educational Foundation, President Dee Dee Francis, who's going to come forward and present a check to Doug Kerr, our Director of Special Education, and Karen Russell, speech pathologist. And Brad Wood coming forward.
Well, first, I'll talk a little bit about Summer Smash. I know a lot of you were there, but for those of you who weren't there, you missed out on a very fun night. Summer Smash was Tom and Kathy Snopper, and they're sitting back there. I think they should come up here. But it was started four or five years ago. And it started as a family party. They bring in big bands. This year, we had the Guess Who. It was downtown at the Epic Center. And as part of that, this was the first year that the Laker Education Foundation was the recipient of the proceeds of the evening, which we were very grateful for. This year, Summer Smash raised thirty-two thousand dollars for the education foundation, which is, yeah, it's amazing. And as part of that, there is a, in the evening, they have something called Fund a Need. And this year, our fund a need was to purchase iPads for special education classrooms, because that's a very needed thing. And you might want to talk about that a little bit, too. But as far as fund the need, the goal was to raise three thousand, correct? Or thirty-five hundred? That was the goal set up for the evening. And we raised eight thousand dollars that night. We did, yes. So on behalf of the Laker Education Foundation, I would like to present this check for eight thousand dollars to ISD 719 to purchase iPads for special education.
Talk a little bit, because I think it's fascinating, the iPad thing with special ed. So do you want it?
Well, yes, they are great. I love it. I want to be buried with my pink iPad. I did give a little speech tonight at the Summer Smash. It was a lot of fun. My husband and I have been going for the last, this is our third year going. And it is always so much fun and definitely worth going to and, you know, contributing some money toward good causes. As far as the iPads, I've been using an iPad in my classroom for about a year and a half now with students. And I cannot believe the interest that students have with using the iPads. In fact, this morning, I picked up one of my little first graders for the first time this week. Started with my students today. And last year, as a kindergartner, he referred to it as his own iPad. So when I picked him up this morning, he goes, "Where's my iPad? Are we going to work on my iPad?" Well, yeah, maybe later this week. But it has just been wonderful having iPads in the classroom using with the special education students. I've seen a lot of changes with how they're engaged and even with the learning that takes place using iPads. It is a phenomenal technology, and it's so great to see that in the classrooms, especially with our students with special needs. So thank you very, very much.
Yeah, I'd like to echo those thanks to the foundation for this generous contribution. These iPads will go directly into the hands of our students in our schools. Right now, we have probably about forty iPads in the hands of teachers in our Level III programs and speech therapists. And Karen's right about student engagement and the iPads and how well they've worked with our kids. So we, again, we really appreciate all of this contribution from the foundation. Thanks very much.
Okay, I just have to take one minute. From up here. Kathy and Tom Snopper. I know you don't want to, but it would really be important to us as a district to recognize you. As I said, Summer Smash started out as a family event, a party, really. And then it turned into something different. And this year, we have the privilege of being the recipient, the foundation, the Laker Educational Foundation, of this event. And so I'd love for you to tell us what you thought of having the Laker Educational Foundation as your partners this year.
Uh-oh. Do we really want to? No, this was fabulous to be able to partner with an organization that is so enthusiastic and supports such an important part of our community. And I use the word "community," not just "schools," because one of the things we've learned in working with the foundation is that it really is across all age levels, even into the senior program. And just a little personal story. My mom, who has speech aphasia, is using something similar to an iPad to help her communicate. So I do know that these technologies and these things we're using are appropriate across all age levels as well. So it was fun. It was very exciting. I think one of the first questions we got from the board was, "Who are you going to have next year?" And if we tell you, we have to kill you. We're still working on that, but we're thrilled and looking forward to the next event.
Tom, do you want to tell us how long it took to raise the eight thousand dollars for the iPad?
The interesting thing about the eight thousand dollars was that that's a part of a fund a need. And basically, you have a live auction, which we made a lot of money in also this year. We were real excited about that. But the fund a need, you're basically just asking the attendees, "We've got this need. You're not going to get anything for it. We need thirty-five hundred dollars." And in about fifteen, twenty minutes, we had eight thousand dollars. It just literally blew us right off the floor. We couldn't believe the response that we got from the attendees. A very, very, very generous group of people. We're happy with it, and we're very appreciative of that.
Thank you. On behalf of the foundation, also on behalf of the school board and the administration, and our special education students that will benefit from this first gift, which is the iPads. Thank you very much. So look forward to working with you again.
Next on our agenda is the open forum. This is a time that people in the audience can address the board on issues that are not on our agenda. Is there anyone that would like to address the board this evening? Okay, moving on. HSNL, approval of candidates.
Good evening. First, I would like to recommend the following candidates for employment and am seeking board approval.
Do I have a motion to accept the candidates for employment? By Tom, second. By Stacy. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven zero.
And next, I would like to present two retirements to the board. The first is William Sher, head custodian of Five Pox, who's been with the district for twenty-five years. And secondly, Barb Spitzmuller, a food services employee who's been with us for sixteen years.
Do I have a motion to accept or approve the district retirements? By Todd, second. By Tom. Any comments or questions? That's a long time.
Forty-one years.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven zero.
And next, I present a motion to rescind the resignation of our Director of Operations and Transportation.
Do I have a motion to accept or approve the rescinding of the resignation of our Director of Operations and Transportation? By Stacy, second. By Tom. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven zero.
All right. And next, I present the first of two additional staffing requests this evening. This one will be taken separately. And this is a staffing request for three distinct positions. The first is a cross-country running assistant coach. And just to talk very briefly about the need for this position, the cross-country running team has actually doubled in size over the last four years, which is a pretty amazing achievement for the program. And just from last year to this year, there's thirty additional students. And it's just been found that really, in order to support the students, the student athletes, they just really need another coach in that program. And this will fall within the established budget for the Activities Department. And then, secondly, we have a Kids Company Assistant Position at Five Pox. This is due to both the number of students in the Kids Company Program at Five Pox and also some of the special needs of students in that program. And then, lastly, we have a Kids Company Student Support Position at Edgewood, and that's very similar to Five Pox as to the reason for the need, being both the number of students participating in that program and also some of the special needs associated with those students. And so with that, I ask for your approval.
Do I have a motion to approve the additional staffing request as described? By Tom, second. By Todd. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven zero.
Next, I present the following leaves of absence and am seeking board approval.
Do I have a motion to accept the leaves of absence?
Some move.
By Mike, second. By Stacy. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven zero.
And next, I'm presenting a new job description to the board for the Assistant Activities Director, a position which was approved previously this summer, and am seeking board approval.
Do I have a motion to accept the new job description for the Assistant Activities Director? By Stacy, second. By Tom. Any comments or questions?
I just have one question. It says this individual meets monthly with the Laker Athletic Booster Club. Another group is the Patrons of the Arch, which is a non-athletic booster club. Is that in either one of the descriptions?
It's not specifically in either of the descriptions. However, it is our Director of Activities' responsibility to make sure that he's maintaining relations and communicating with all of our stakeholders and the groups like PAA, PLAA. And so that is inherent in that role. And the only way that the Assistant Activities Director would be responsible for that would be if he was designated that responsibility by the director. And so it is not a group that is specifically named in either of the job descriptions. However, I do think that it is inherent in that role for the director.
Okay. And then my other question is, is it also inherent for the director to be involved with the Laker Hall of Fame group?
Yes, it is. And there's a strong tradition of that, of that interaction. And I know that Eric currently works with that group every year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? As I reviewed this, it was important to me that we see some continuity from six twelve in our programs that we haven't really had so much of in the past. And I think that's reflected in this job description. So I appreciate that. Thank you. Hearing no other comments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven zero.
You have one more.
All right. And the last one, yes. On behalf of the School Board Certified Staff Committee and the Educational Support Staff Committee, it is my recommendation that the following terms and conditions of employment be approved.
Do I have a motion to accept the listed agreements and terms and conditions of employment?
Some move.
By Stacy, second.
Second.
By Tom. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven zero. Thanks, Matt. Onto our unfinished business. School board goals. Back in August, we had discussion on what our goals would be for the coming year, as well as into the following year after that. So we're looking at a kind of a two-year plan here. And we also kind of base them off of this past year's goals. After that discussion, they were wordsmithed a little bit and changed around, so they made sense. And it was sent out to all board members, asking for feedback. And I received minimal feedback. So I'm assuming that most of you or all of you are in favor of our goals. But I'd like to open it up for any discussion if you have any other comments that you'd like to make. I know, Martha, you had made a couple of comments. And one of them specifically on the community outreach, I believe.
Yeah.
And I guess I needed you to explain that a little more.
I know in the 2011-12 section, you said you had a way of measuring or a, you have a way of measuring the goals. One example is board members keep a log of outreach efforts made annually. And I didn't see it in the current year. I just wondered if with these goals, are there some measures that go along with that?
I think that that would be, could be added. It might be just oversight, but we would continue to make sure we're doing that. Everyone in agreement with that?
Yes, I agree with that.
Any other comments or questions on the goals? Okay. Then I'll take a motion to approve our goals for the coming year.
Some move.
By Todd, second.
Second.
By Tom. Any last-minute comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven zero. We're onto new business. And I believe Decision Resources is here to present the survey results. So, and Kristy, you'll introduce?
Good evening. As you know, much of the summer was spent conducting a customer satisfaction survey that Decision Resources did for us. And many of the questions were similar or the same as what we had in 2010 when they last did the survey for us. And that was so we could compare how we're doing over time. And of course, we always ask a few new questions in our surveys as well. The most noticeable for this survey will be our small sampling of parents of young children, preschool and early elementary, to see what their thoughts were on four-language immersion actions. So Decision Resources is here. Bill Morris will have a PowerPoint for you. And here he is.
Well, first, it's a pleasure to be here with you again to talk about the 2012 School District Survey. We spoke with four hundred randomly selected households across the district. That included both households being served by landlines and households being served by cellphones. The non-response rate was approximately three percent. Once folks understood that we weren't going to sell them anything in particular in this district, they were more than willing to talk with us. The results are projectable, since it is a randomly selected audience, to, in the case of the overall, four hundred, four hundred is plus or minus five percent. And in the case of the parent households, the two hundred and fifty sample is projectable to all households with younger children at plus or minus six point three percent. The average time it took respondents to get through the survey was thirty-one minutes. We did have ten percent who did stay on the phone with us for over one hour. We don't hurry people along. If they want to share things with us, we're more than willing to. And by the time they got through much of this survey, they were more than willing to provide us with any information or anecdotes. The demographics of the survey do adequately mirror your census data. So we do feel that we have a good representative sampling of the district as a whole. Let's begin first. Let's begin first with school-aged children. We asked residents in the overall survey whether or not they had school-aged children, and if so, what school they attended. Forty percent indicated that they had children that were attending Prior Lake Savage area public schools. Six percent indicated that they were attending other schools. That could be private, parochial, or charter schools. And fifty-four percent were empty nesters. That is, having no school-aged children at home currently. So the district now has switched over into a majority-empty nester district. You're at that tip point that we see in a lot of other districts along the third, the third circle around the Twin Cities. The fifty-four percent is not unusually high. In fact, it's right at the norm when we consider your neighboring school districts. One question that we ask in each of our surveys is, "How would you rate the quality of education?" This varies, of course, from district to district. But in particular, it also varies with respect to uncertainty. You might notice a few things about uncertainty this time. As we go through these charts, you'll notice that uncertainty has really dropped from 2010, which are the blue bars, to the red bars of 2012. Communications has done a very good job of increasing people's knowledge about the district and ability to make judgments about the district. What we found was first that there's very, very little dissatisfaction here. Only five percent rated the school district's quality of education as either only fair or poor. That's in comparison to the norm of ten percent or more. We call those the curmudgeons. That ten percent tends to be fairly universally constant, except here. The five percent is a very good number in comparison to other districts. Now, if we take a look at the excellent ratings, forty-four percent indicated excellent. That dropped by three percent, which is statistically insignificant from the 2010 rating. That also puts Prior Lake Savage in terms of other metropolitan-area suburban school districts within the top decile, the top ten percent of school districts in the greater metropolitan area. Good ratings also went up from thirty-five percent to forty-seven percent, which is statistically significant. Most of those good ratings, when we compared with 2010, came from people who were undecided last time or who had the demographic characteristics of those folks that were unsure. So the increased communication has, in fact, achieved a positive result. Do residents on the whole feel that you meet the learning needs of children? And they could tell us different answers. They felt you met the needs of almost all, most, only some, or too few. Now, you'll notice, if we go to the far end of the chart again, uncertainty has dropped dramatically from twenty percent back in 2006, now down to six percent in 2012. The "all" at thirty-one percent was a drop. If we combine that, though, with the "most," fifty-eight percent, which was a statistically significant increase, we have almost ninety percent of residents saying that you are meeting the needs, the learning needs of all or most students. In terms of the criticism, five percent feel that you're only doing so for only some. And zero thought that you were meeting the learning needs of too few students. That ninety percent is an outstanding rating in comparison with the metropolitan area as a whole. It also indicates a real trend toward the positive side of the equation. The eighty-nine percent is a statistically significant increase from the eighty-three percent that we had two years ago. So again, moving in the right direction. What about quality over time? Well, thirty-two percent felt that the quality of the public schools over the past five years had actually improved, either much better or somewhat better. As you can see, if we compare with two years ago, that was at sixteen percent. So you've actually doubled on the favorable side on this question. And that is a significant change. About the same state at about the same level. Now, if we take a look at the worst, 8% indicated that they thought the quality over time was somewhat worse. 1% indicated much worse. Nine percent, though, is trivial in comparison to what we find in other districts. Anything under 10%, we would flag, anything over 10%, rather, we would flag for you. This, however, if we took, when we took a look at the 8%, tended to come from residents who were long-term empty nesters. And in a couple of the marginal comments, they were talking about the good old days in terms of when they were in school, you didn't need a playground. All you really needed was a dirt pile, this is to quote one, with a swing attached to a tree limb. So, they were yearning for what we call back to basics, in this case, very, very retrograde basics. Now, what about perceptions of the district? Well, we've asked residents on the three surveys most of these questions before. Let me explain how this is laid out for you in the chart. We start with the first time that the question was asked. So, for example, 2006 spend effectively and efficiently. That asked people whether they would agree or disagree that the school district spends taxpayers' money effectively and efficiently. We then asked that again in 2010 and 2012. If we take that set as a whole, you can see a pronounced trend. Back in 2006, less than a majority agreed with that, while over 30% indicated they disagreed. That has been shifting over dramatically. By 2012, we have 2/3 of the district, roughly 2/3 of the district, indicating they agree with the statement, while the disagreement is down to 25%. So, you've dropped out of the 30 range entirely now, and only 11% are uncertain. Does this compare? Well, the comparison would be with the norm across the metropolitan area. The norm on this currently is 50% agree to 40% disagree. So, you're much higher than the norm on the agreement side and much lower than the norm on the disagreement side. A very, very enviable place to be. Now, do people feel that the budget problems facing the school district are going to worsen in the next few years? Well, that's dropped also, and it's varied quite a bit over the past three surveys. When we began asking that question, 3/4 of the residents roughly agreed with that. That went as high as 84% in 2010 and dropped back to 65% in 2012. 17% disagree. They don't see things getting any worse for you. And 19% were unsure. This result reflects what's been going on across the metropolitan area. People, quite frankly, are confused in terms of where funding is right now. How much has been given? Whether there has been money given? They don't understand the holdback. They don't understand the impact. And what they're being told are different kinds of stories depending on who they're talking to. So, we did expect to see an increase in uncertainty. The 65 to 17 certainly indicates that people who have opinions are feeling that the budget problems will worsen in the future. Now, do they trust the board and administration to do what's right for the students? That moved from 76% to 89%. Very, very solid movement. Only 7% indicate they don't trust the board and administration, and 4% are unsure. The 89 to 7 is the highest rating we have on that question across the metropolitan area. So, the trust factors are very high with respect to the school district currently. Are people proud of the schools? And would they recommend them to a friend or to a neighbor? 89% indicated they would do so. 6% indicated they disagreed with that statement. The 89% now is at the norm. The 81 in 2010 was somewhat below the norm. Do they feel that the district is doing a good job of communicating issues in a timely fashion? That's up to 85% to 10. Keep in mind that the norm on that currently across the metropolitan area is 60 to 30. So, again, communications is very, very well regarded here. And then finally, do they feel that you're providing a safe environment for students? No question here, safety is just not an issue. 93% agreed, while 3% were unsure. In general, then, across the board, things have been moving in a positive direction, except for the confusion over the budget issues. Maybe that will clarify in the next two years, although given the trend that we've seen going on, I tend to doubt it. ECFE. This was asked only of the parents. Now, remember, our parent sample took in households that had preschoolers and also, infants are preschoolers, and also, parents of children in elementary grades. This is a little bit different from what we've done in the past when we asked parents at, students at all grade levels. Well, first, we asked the parent group whether or not they had a preschooler or infant enrolled in ECFE. And what we found was that 49% of them indicated they did. That's outstanding. That's right at the top, in fact, of enrollment of preschoolers and infants in a public school program. We then asked, are you likely to enroll your child in Prior Lake Savage public schools? And what we found was that 2/3 indicated that they were very likely, and 22% indicated they were somewhat likely. So, essentially, you've got 90% indicating that they are likely to enroll their kids in the schools. Only 3%, which is very low, indicated they're not at all likely. And 8%, the part of the pie chart that's missing, indicated that they were unsure. They weren't quite sure what they were going to do at this point. But again, your conversion rate in terms of ECFE enrollment is at about 90%. What we found is that somewhat likely and the very likely, when we've done over time studies in other districts, do tend to enroll. And that is an extremely high level of parents going from ECFE into the school district. This next question, or series of questions, was asked only of parents again. And there are some changes here. Remember that we are looking at two different parent groups. So, in 2010, the parent sample includes parents of students at all grade levels. If we look at 2012, the parent sample includes only parents of preschoolers and elementary grade students. As a result, the priorities those parents would ascribe to various of the programming options we gave them might change, particularly if you're the parent of a high school student versus the parent of a preschooler. And in fact, the first thing you'll notice is that in 2012, the very important responses just about all the way down the line diminished. Some of these things just weren't important to parents of younger, younger students. This was a four-point scale in terms of the wording of the question. We asked whether or not they considered that to be very important, somewhat important, not too important, or not at all important. So, we're looking at point one. The folks indicated this was a very important program or service as far as they were concerned. Now, if we go through that list for a moment, the quality of the teaching staff, 90%. Very, very little changeover whether we're asking parents of students at all grade levels or whether we're asking parents of younger kids. If we look through the chart, going down from 90, looking at the red bars in particular, 86% indicated academic achievement was extremely important to them. 81% basic academic coursework. Music, theater, and the arts didn't play as high, 39%. But again, what we've noticed when we've broken down this data before by the grade level of the student, that tends to be an issue for middle school and high school parents much more strongly than it is for elementary school parents. College prep, still very important. Access to technology, again, not so important due to the grade levels of the kids. Personalizing education at 55%, very little change. Extracurricular opportunities, that did go down, and we would explain that in terms of the two different parent groups that we're looking at in these two years. Character development, still important. Student behavior, not quite as important. Went from 88 to 67. Test scores, yeah, that's still remaining a fairly important distinction here. Responsiveness to student needs, again, very little change relatively. And co-curricular academic opportunities, 61 to 37. Again, this can be attributed to the fact that we're looking at parents of younger kids. So, there is a bit of a change with respect to what the parents of grade schoolers and parents of preschoolers for that matter consider to be important, as opposed to what parents of middle school, junior high, or high school students consider to be important. We're also going to see this come into play in one other aspect of the survey, and that has to do with communication systems, which was a little bit of a surprise. Okay, let's talk about language immersion. An elementary program for language immersion. Again, this was asked only of parents. The two top pie charts are the 2010 results. So, we had 52% who indicated they would support or favor, 43% who opposed. We then said, well, would you still support if a property tax increase was required? And there, a majority indicated, 52% that they would still support. So, now we're down to roughly 28% overall who are supporting. And we lose 39%, roughly 40% who those favored it because it's going to cost something. Now, if we move down to support in 2012, those are the bottom two pie charts. With elementary and preschool parents, 66% favor. So, a much higher support level, while only 20% oppose. If we then take a look also at what, how they feel if a tax increase, property tax increases required, rather than 52%, we have 62% remaining committed. So, among those younger parents, we're at about 41, 42%, indicating they would support even if the property tax were required to fund the program. So, differences there, and as was suspected, which is one of the reasons why we broke, why we defined the parent group this way. If you take out the high school and middle school parents, given this was an elementary school program we were looking at, the results could be expected. The degree of change, however, surprised us in terms of moving from 52 overall to 66. Okay, let's talk about job approval ratings. Now, this is a little bit of a confusing chart that we threw in because usually by this time in the presentation, people are tired of looking at simple charts. So, we have a calliope for you to consider. And if we take a look, what we have to begin with are the 2006 results. We then move into the 2010 results and then the 2012 results. The important one, as far as, as we're concerned, are the gold ones. So, if we take a look at 2012, the excellent ratings on the school board, we come in at 5%. If we take a look at the superintendent administration, also 5%. If we take a look at teachers and staff, 39%. Now, is this a surprise? No. We find this pattern to be the case just about everywhere. In fact, if the, if the teachers weren't at about 40%, we would flag that for you. Now, what about goods? Well, that's secondary positive rating. 74% rate the school board as good in terms of job performance. 68% rate the superintendent and administration as good. 50% rate the teachers and staff as good. But now, let's combine that for a minute to get positive ratings. So, the school board positive rating is 79%. That's outstanding. The superintendent's positive rating is 73%, also one of the highest metro-wide. And if we take a look at your teachers, they're just below 90%. Again, very, very high rating. Now, what about the only fair and poor ratings? Well, I think we can dispense with those pretty quickly. They're almost nonexistent. We consider it to be, after surveying over 100 districts across the greater metro area, the threshold that we would consider to be worrisome would be if the negative ratings on any aspect of the school district in terms of job performance reached as high as 20%. And that isn't the case with respect to any of the three components that we took a look at. In fact, if we take a look at the school board, superintendent administration, and teacher staff with respect to poor ratings, it's, they're almost nonexistent. So, how does this compare with other school districts, though? Well, the board is certainly within the top quartile, if not the top decile, the top 10% of school board ratings by residents of the school district across the greater metropolitan area. We don't consider the greater Minnesota ratings to be of the same ilk because you're looking at small-town center ratings. And so, as a result, if you're a member of, let's say, the... Now, why can't I think of a Minnesota, greater Minnesota town? Chatfield. Nice town in southwestern, southeastern Minnesota. The ratings are at 90%. But everybody knows everybody, and school board elections generally turn on 500 votes. So, as a result, they have an advantage. Size is a real advantage on that. In greater metropolitan area districts, of course, you're representing a lot bigger of a constituency. So, communications come into play, but also policy tends to, you're operating in an echo chamber essentially. So, as a result, it's a tougher road to hoe in a greater metropolitan area school district. These are exemplary ratings, though. School board administration, there's no issues at all. You've built a nice reservoir of goodwill. The superintendent administration, the same kind of thing can be said. And with the teachers and staff, they're very, very well regarded. So, on all three aspects of the administration, of the board and teachers, the job performance ratings are extremely and uniformly high. However, let's add something else to that picture. In 2010, you had more people who thought your financial management was negative than said it was positive. So, you had 43% indicating they thought financial management was either good or excellent. On the other hand, though, we have 48% saying only fair or poor. If we take a look at today, we're at 58% excellent or good, and 33% only fair or poor. So, a shift of a good 10% over into the positive category. As you can also see, uncertainty stayed relatively unchanged. This is a very good result. 58%, almost 60% might not seem to be as outstanding, but we have a norm on this one across the metropolitan area. And currently, the norm for most school districts now is 45% excellent or good, and 44% only fair or poor. So, most school districts, then, are sitting at a balance in terms of how residents see the financial management. What this also indicates is that on each of our fiscal credibility questions, the district is in very good position. In fact, it's improved its position over the past two years. Okay, that's a nice way of getting into property taxes. We take a look next at overall taxes, that is, the total sum of taxes, and school taxes only. So, the first two bars are the 2010-2012 comparison of the overall property taxes. And as you can see, we've got 22% in 2010, 15% in 2012 who consider their property taxes to be very high. If we take a look at somewhat high, 41 to 52. But nevertheless, when we sum those two categories, we have 67% who regard their property taxes to be on the high side. If we take a look at the about average, it's now gone down to 26% from the 34% two years ago. We would classify your property tax climate here as being moderately hostile. The 67% is a little bit short of what we're finding in places in Western Hennepin where the high, somewhat high and very high is at the 80% level. But nevertheless, this indicates embracing wind with respect to tax issues. If we take a look at school taxes, the very high actually dropped by 10% from 19 to 9, while the somewhat high moved from 38 to 45. On the high side, then, we're looking at 54%. 57% was the rating the last time. So, there has been somewhat of a drop, three points, and the intensity factor has gone down. What about with respect to the average rating? Well, they're both in the mid, in the mid-30s, which is good. Overall, though, this suggests the same kind of thing, a moderately hostile tax climate. This doesn't mean that people are going to say, oh, my gosh, they're asking for a property tax increase. I don't care what it's for, I'm going to vote no. Certainly, there are people like that. But nevertheless, what this does indicate is that there is a large proportion of people who will make their decisions based on what the benefits are. who will make their decisions based on what the benefits are from any tax increase that's proposed. Well, how do people feel about a referendum? Well, in 2010, you had almost thirty percent that said, "I would vote against almost all tax increases for the schools." The majority were in that, "I would vote for some, but against others," while ten percent was your core base, indicating they would vote for just about anything. And things have changed. What we have now is that going from twenty-nine percent down to eighteen percent, who would be against all. That core opposition of eighteen percent in relationship to the rest of the metropolitan area is about thirteen points below the norm. What we're finding across metro is that about one-third are in that against-all category. So, it's not as high here as it is in other districts. You have almost three-quarters of your residents who say, "I can be convinced. Depends on what the tax increase is, and it depends on what the money would be going for." And then finally, seven percent indicated they would be for all. So, we have a little bit of a movement of the for-all group, but nevertheless, the key on this is that people can be persuaded. You're in a much better situation than what we're finding with a lot of your neighbors, where there is a huge negative group, core negative, that has to be overcome. The eighteen percent, if we look at that pie chart a different way, what that is also saying, if we take the against-all and the for-all, that when a referendum is announced, you're down eleven percent. But you still have seventy-three percent that we're unsure of which way they're going to go. Being down eleven percent is pretty good in comparison to what we're finding in other districts, where they're down twenty to thirty percent. Now, we then started talking about property taxes in a bit more detail. And the first dealt with deferred maintenance. One of the marginal comments that came up more often than we would have expected, we defined what deferred maintenance was for, the older buildings and parking lots. And we had about four percent of your residents coming back and saying, "Well, that's not interesting. Can't we vote for something interesting? What about computers?" Well, little did they know we were going to ask about that next. But deferred maintenance is never a very interesting topic. It's something that needs to be done. It's just something that doesn't grab the emotions of the voters, so it becomes a little bit of a harder sell. Now, even so, we had twenty-two percent that said they would raise their taxes by nothing for deferred maintenance projects. And that twenty-two percent is about eleven points lower than the metro area norm on deferred maintenance. So, you actually have more people listening. The other thing that was noteworthy to us is there's only eight percent that we're unsure on this. That is, usually, we would find almost as high, twenty-two, twenty-five percent, indicating they have no more detail. Which parking lots? Which shrubs are going to be replaced? That kind of thing, landscaping, what have you. In this case, we had most residents throwing their lot one way or another. And what we came up with is that your typical resident would be willing to spend about two dollars and fifty cents to three dollars per month on deferred maintenance. Now, this is without any information at all about what the plan is, how things would change. Diagrams help, pictures help. But this is just hearing that you're going to go for a referendum on deferred maintenance. Now, let's talk about more interesting things, at least according to any of your residents. We asked first about the importance for today's students of technology. This is a very, very high-technology district in terms of attitudes. Eighty-five percent feel it is either absolutely essential or very important. Thirteen percent indicated somewhat important. And you have very, very few Luddites saying that it was not at all important or not too important, only two percent. So, the forty-three percent and forty-two percent at the outset bodes very, very well for a technology levy. We then asked, "What have you heard, or how would you rate the technology opportunities at Prior Lake Savage Public Schools?" And what we found was that seventy-eight percent feel they're either excellent or good. Only eight percent see them as lacking, and fourteen percent had no idea. Fourteen percent wore older empty nesters again, as you'd expect. The nine percent excellent is somewhat low in comparison with other districts. But that also sets up a very interesting dynamic. You don't have a lot of people who are saying you have excellent opportunities now in the schools. So, as a result, any kind of a request for additional funding that would expand those opportunities would be considered seriously by at least seventy-seven percent of your residents. Well, how seriously would it be considered? And in this case, what we did, we did the same kind of, we call this, I should have said this earlier, our "let's make a deal" question. We started a random point along the chart, perhaps six dollars to nine dollars per month, and they can tell us yes or no. If they tell us no, we then say, "Well, how about three to five dollars?" At that point, they could say no, or they could say, "Let's cut to the chase. I'm not going to support any tax increase with this purpose." If they tell us yes, perhaps it's six to nine, we then move up to ten to thirteen. And every survey starts at a different random point. So, as a result, it's, we have equally often a number of people getting fourteen to seventeen dollars a month as the starting, starting cost, with the up to two dollars a month as the starting cost. So, having said that, how do people feel about a property tax increase for technology? Well, again, twenty-five percent indicated nothing. Technology, successful technology levies that we've been involved in, and we passed, we helped pass, rather, six last year. The nothing started much higher, thirty percent to thirty-five percent. So, that looks very good. That's the group that you're not going to have onboard regardless. Nine percent are unsure, again, a very low level of uncertainty. What people would be willing to support this time, you'll notice that the scale is a little bit different now. We're not going up in dollar increments. We're going up in two-dollar increments instead. And the typical person would support a four to four-fifty-dollar-per-month increase. Now, this was also, we indicated in the survey that both of these could be coming at people, so that they knew that there could be two questions on the ballot. But it gives you an idea of where people are in terms of what their thinking is now. The good news is that very, very few people are ruling it out of the question. Again, this would depend on the kinds of things that you would propose if you decide to go ahead. The one thing to keep in mind, though, that attaching it directly back to curriculum in terms of the technology is critical in any kind of a technology levy. At least, that was our experience in the last election cycle. How informed do people feel? Well, this is a little bit counterintuitive, but then we took a look at these people in a bit more depth. We had seventy-seven percent in 2010 that indicated they were either very well-informed or somewhat well-informed. That dropped to sixty-six percent, so about a ten-point drop. If we take a look at the not-too-informed and not-at-all-informed, we're up to thirty-five percent now who fall into those latter two categories. But now, keep in mind that when we took a look at various perceptions of the school district, the number of people who are saying, "Don't know," or didn't have opinions, dropped accordingly. So, this is an overall feeling, and when we took a look further at those folks who were not-too-informed or not-at-all-informed, we call the eight percent and part of the twenty-seven percent information insatiables. These are the folks that want every bit of information. And in particular, what they're focusing on is the budget. So, they would like to see the budget. They would like to see it in all of its beauty and entirety, and probably would also appreciate if a board member would drop by to explain it. These folks have a very high bar set in terms of what kind of information would satisfy them. And with respect to that eight percent, and perhaps what we have in other districts, about half of the twenty-seven percent, those folks, you could probably move them to not-too-informed, but they'll never be totally satisfied. However, keep in mind that on specific messages, which is more, more critical to a school district, people are more informed right now. Are they satisfied with the amount of print? Seventy-four percent indicate, yes, they have about the right amount of print. You're down to two percent who are saying they have too much. You don't have many clams in the district. We call them that affectionately. These are the folks that really don't want to be bothered. They elect the board, they expect you to do a good job for them, and they'll come back and vote later. But that two percent, usually, that's at about ten percent, given the demographics of this district. You've got far more people, however, who feel they're getting too little information. The twenty-three percent, and that traces right back to those folks that were saying that they're not too well-informed or not at all well-informed. But where are people getting their information from? And there have been some changes on this. If we take a look, again, this is a 2010-2012 comparison, different colors, though. The district newsletter, forty-seven percent considered that to be a principal source of information, that went up to forty-eight. Cable access is down. That's following the trend, though, we're finding right across the greater metropolitan area, in that fewer and fewer people are relying on cable access. It's very nice to see it at ten percent, though. We had reports to a couple of school districts over the past couple of weeks, where it was quite clear that not even spouses were watching the school district, the school board meetings. The district website doing very, very well at thirty-eight percent. District emails, thirty percent, no change there. Teacher emails, down a little bit to thirty-two percent. Building newsletters, still staying very strong at thirty-two percent. The local weekly paper, however, has really gone down as a principal source of information, from sixty-seven percent to fifty percent. And we see this again later when we ask a few more in-depth questions about what newspapers they're utilizing. The superintendent's column, from forty-four to twenty-one, I take it that's also placed in the newspaper. Okay, well, you're a beneficiary of that drop. 2010 teachers, still the grapevine, the teachers' grapevine is doing very, very well. Informal discussions, that's our polite term for the grapevine, that went up to forty-nine percent now. So, you've got half the district that are using informal discussions. And in fact, your grapevine here is fairly lush. You have three different varietals planted out there now in terms of three different groups. Your young parents use one grapevine. Older residents over fifty-five are using another grapevine. And then, parents using alternatives to the public schools form a third grapevine. And none of those three grapevines really intersect. And then finally, the community ed catalog dropped by about eight points to twenty percent. So, in general, people are using the various communication channels somewhat less than they did two years ago, with the one thing being the grapevine, which tends to go on forever. Now, what about newspapers? Well, in general, the Prior Lake American, and this was simply asked, "Are you reading the newspaper?" It wasn't asked whether or not this was a principal source of information. So, readership is high, but people do not consider that to be a major source of information about the school district. The Savage Pacer, not as many people reading the Savage Pacer, but given the demographics of the district, we expect to see that at twenty-nine percent, very little change from two years ago. The Star Tribune South, the glow is off the insert, forty-five down to forty. And we're finding that to be the case whether we're looking at Star Tribune North or Star Tribune West. The amount, the share that they're getting is moving downward. And then finally, the Star Tribune Online actually doubled. This is one of the few districts where the online offering did actually increase, and it increased quite significantly. Well, what about preferred sources of information? This is a distinct question. The past two questions asked, "Where are you getting your information from?" Now, on this one, we're asking, "Where would you like to get your information from?" And this was a closed-ended question, in terms of we provided various answers that they could point to. And as you can see, the local newspaper in 2006 dominated. You had a very concentrated dominant communications network here. That now has dropped down to less than thirty percent, at twenty-nine percent. At the same time, though, the district newsletter has moved up to twenty. So, those two communication channels are reaching just shy of a majority of residents across the district. The website is moving upward, thirteen percent. Email, not as high as it was last time, at eighteen percent. Cable TV, that's what we're finding right across metro. Mailings are still doing well, at about eleven percent. And of course, no one would indicate, or very few people indicate, that word-of-mouth in the grapevine is their preferred source of information. Scattered, the one percent indicated things like coming to meetings, and also looking at signage. You must have signs that have little messages on them across the district that change occasionally. So, that was mentioned by two people. In general, though, now it's two-tiered in terms of the communication system, with the district newsletter almost as high as the local newspaper. Now, we then asked, and this is a comparison between all residents and younger, parents of younger students only. And as you can see, things change dramatically. As you're looking at parents who are coming into the system or have younger kids, they're relying on different things. Look at the local newspaper, for example. That moved among all residents, is at twenty-nine. That's down to five. Parents are going for the district newsletter at twenty-nine, and email at thirty-one. The website also is being utilized much more at eighteen, mailings at thirteen. But the result here is that, as we take a look at your younger parents versus residents as a whole, it's a totally different communication system that they're using, much more computer-oriented, and much more oriented toward district kinds of publications, whether electronic or on And then, we took a look at social media. First, we took a look at use, and the blue and the green are comparing current usage rates. So, you've got twenty-two percent this year who access blogs for information. Forty-three percent who use Facebook, and twenty-nine percent using Twitter. The percent of folks that are using Twitter is much higher in this district than it is in just about every other metropolitan area school district. Normally, that comes in at about twenty percent, or even in the teens. Here, however, you've reached thirty percent roughly, which is incredible. Now, would people be interested, excuse me, in using that social media to communicate with the school district? And on this, we've got a leveling out. The blogs and Twitter would be utilized by sixteen percent and fourteen percent, respectively. The winner on this is Facebook, and that's the result we're finding right across metro, that if social media is going to be used, the place to engage is going to be on Facebook. Although here, you've certainly, given the twenty-nine percent who indicate they're on Twitter, it would be possible to drive more people to Twitter, to obtain tweets about the school district. The last part of the survey looked at technology use. So, this was asked two ways, whether or not your child had one, and whether or not the adult had one. So, keep in mind that, again, the children's sample are the lower grades, preschoolers and elementary school kids. So, if we take a look at iPads and tablets, thirty-six percent of these parents indicated that they had, their child had one. Forty-four percent of the adults reported they had one. Laptops at home, sixty-eight percent indicated that they allowed their children to use their laptop. And with respect to smartphone, a little bit different here. Twenty-seven percent indicate their child has a smartphone. Sixty-seven percent indicate that they themselves do. We then asked the big question on whether or not you'd allow your child to bring one of those devices to school to use. And the answer to that was a resounding no. And also, we ended up, this was a survey tie-up, in terms of questions with people explaining in great detail. in great detail why they wouldn't, with peanut butter sandwiches having been put into the disk reader and all sorts of amazing things that I'd never really thought about. But you're down to about a third of the parents who would send their kid to school with a, and again, these are younger students with one of those devices. So overall, what can we say? Well, overall, this is a very solid report for the district. There's been a lot of good changes over the past two years. Your fiscal credibility is top. In terms of other districts, you definitely would be within the top decile with respect to the way people react to your budgeting, to your priorities, and to value for the taxes they pay. If we take a look next at communications, your communication system is very, very effective. In comparison with other school districts, I'd place this one probably within the top five, and certainly the top in terms of county districts. Taking a look at Dakota, taking a look at Scotts, taking a look at Carver, you're reaching just about everybody that you need to reach. The one cautionary note on that is that as your new parents are coming into the system, it may require a shift in emphasis in terms of the kinds of communication devices that you utilize. And where you differ from other districts is that Twitter is a real possibility here as a significant communications media. As long as you can shrink everything into, what is it, one hundred and twenty-four characters? The types of, well, let's talk about perceptions and the perception gap. One of the things that we worried about in 2006, and again in 2010, was that the number of folks that were uncertain about aspects of the district was relatively high. And nature abhors a vacuum. And when you've got those kinds of vacuums, they can be filled by just about anybody or anything very rapidly. What's occurred over the past two years is that your level of information on specific messages and topics has actually improved to the point where you're among the leading districts on people that have an opinion. If we take a look further on that and take a look at those opinions, what's happened is that the shift has been to the positive side. So not only did you manage to communicate more with folks over the past two years, but you were able to impress them into giving you a favorable rating on each of those aspects, which is one of the reasons why your fiscal credibility is so strong. Language immersion, clearly, if we take a look at the students of younger kids, there's real support for it there, even if a property tax increase is required. But overall, what's developed over the past two years is you've got a huge reservoir of goodwill right now in the district. It's quite clear that people trust you to do what's right. There's very, very little differences with respect to priorities. And in general, overall, if we were to take a look at the difference between 2012 and 2010, and compare it to the strides that you made between 2006 and 2010, you've made amazing strides. You've gone above and beyond where we would have expected you to be in the course of just two years. This is one of the most content districts that we've found anywhere. And that reservoir of goodwill will serve you very, very well over the next couple of years as you proceed with policy decisions. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
I'll take a stab at it. I forget which chart it is. If you go back. So all the, all the, so when you talk to parents between 2010, 2012, it's different groups of parents, right?
Right.
So anytime we do a comparison, it's not very worthwhile data because we're comparing two sets of parents, aren't we? Between 2010, 2012.
Exactly.
Why was that decision made, I guess, to look at different sets of parents?
Because so many of these topics, as I understand it, were really applying to elementary-grade parents and preschoolers, particularly with respect to the immersion. And the one thing this did unearth, which is very intriguing, because we haven't seen that in any other district, is the total changeover in the communication system with respect to those parents, the younger, the parents of younger kids versus residents as a whole, or even older parents. So that indicates a challenge for you in the out years as those parents come more into the system.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Appreciate that information.
One other question, will we be able to get a copy of the electronic, the pictures? Electronic copy?
I'm sorry, electronic what?
Copy of the presentation. It's easier to see it in the words, you know, instead of keeping paper. I'd like to keep an electronic copy of the presentation. Is that available?
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Moving on to professional development report.
Good evening, Chair, Schimmick, Board members, and Dr. Gruber. Tonight, Melissa and I are here to present some of the staff development activities that have taken place. As you know, in your board packet, we've provided you with a comprehensive overview of what has taken place, the remaining part of last year, and then into this new school year. And so tonight, our goal is just to highlight some of those different activities that have taken place. Melissa will do some of the secondary activities that have been happening. I will touch on some of the elementary areas, and then we will give you some brief updates as to what to look forward to for the remainder of the school year.
Good evening. I'm not here to ask to go to DC again. I will be back, though, in November. No, I'm excited to be here in my new capacity as the professional development coordinator. Previous to this position, I was at Twin Oaks as a middle school teacher in the language arts department for seven years. So taking on some new challenges, and I'm really excited. So the first thing I wanted to talk to you about tonight is the work that we've been doing at the secondary level with regard to our collaborative team. For the last two years, we've been using a vertical team model, six-twelve, so people have been working within their departments to align curriculum and looking at scope and sequence and things like that, and communicating in that vertical structure. This year, we started Back to School Week, actually, with a presentation by Dr. Richard Dewey, during which we are kind of transitioning from that vertical team model to a professional learning community. It's more of a process than a structure. So kind of looking at the graphic that we have here, Dr. Dewey shared this with us during his presentation. It's a cyclical process that's sort of built on this solid foundation of a shared mission, values, setting goals, celebrating those achievements. But at the same time, it builds as well as returns to that foundation. So it's not, it's really a journey, it's not sort of a trip where you have an end point that you're trying to reach, it's continuous. And so we started by having Dr. Dewey share with the staff sort of what PLCs are built on and how to begin the process of creating those PLCs within the district. Again, six-twelve, kind of a change from the vertical team. But still, with the goal in mind that people are working collaboratively together to achieve goals, as well as great learning for all students. And we're going to continue that PLC work as the year goes on and into the next year.
The last two years, Mr. Holberg and Kara Rickenberg have been working really hard on the new implementation of our new science curriculum, which was our BOSS science program, to the new National Geographic Science Curriculum. We offered a number of professional development opportunities last year in the area of science for our National Geographic curriculum. And as we move into year two of this curriculum adoption, we will be continuing to offer support to our teachers as they continue to move and learn more about the National Geographic curriculum. One thing that we have found with this science curriculum is that it aligns very well to the science standards, and that a lot of the things we've been doing with our environmental ed program also is fitting in very well. And we have a number of great things still that we want to add and align to the new science curriculum. And that's kind of one of our goals this year, is to take a little bit closer look at that and help staff, give them some guidance and some support in how we can do that within our curriculum. Last year, with the math expression, once the board approved the new math expressions curriculum, we had a number of teachers across the district in all grade levels go through what we call the staged implementation, a little bit different than a pilot. A pilot is really more just a handful of teachers trying it out, where here it was board-approved, and we had a number of teachers onboard and really eager to try this new math expressions curriculum. And so these teachers taught this curriculum all year long, and we're really excited to come back this year and present to their colleagues all the wonderful things they have learned throughout the year. At Back to School Workshop, we also invited math expressions representatives to come in, they gave an overview of the curriculum. But a number of our trainings that took place and will take place for this year will be by our committee members, the people that worked in our science and math committees, and teachers who really were the ones teaching and learning about that curriculum and knowing what's best for our kids here in Prior Lake. So they'll continue to offer that training, and Melissa and I, our role is to help support them in setting those trainings up and offering any support that they need in those areas. As was mentioned in the previous presentation, we know that technology is a huge focus in our district. And two areas within both of these new curriculum adoptions, there are some huge online components. With National Geographic, there is the online resource called NG Connect, and with math expressions, the online component is called Think Central. And those online resources are available not only for teachers, but to students as well, and to parents. And that, too, there's, you know, with the new curriculum adoption, there's so much information to absorb in a year. And so they'll continue to look into more things like that, and they're excited to kind of take that to the next level, too. We did some technology training as well at Back to School Workshop, and we look to do further training in that area throughout the year as well. This year, Amy Ketnan is the new Kara Rickenberg. She's in the curriculum coordinator position, and she will be working closely with Mr. Holberg to make sure that we see that the professional development needs of our staff is met, and how Melissa and I can best support them in their journey as they go through this curriculum this year. Looking ahead, one of the things that you'll notice will look a little bit different, to better address the needs of our district, what was known as the District Staff Development Committee in previous years, is now, is now taking on a new title called the Professional Development Committee. And what we decided to do after some long conversations last year, we decided to merge our District Staff Development Committee, which is comprised of building representatives from every school, our technology, our District Technology Committee, as well as all district media specialists. We decided just for the needs of our district and looking forward to 21st century learning and what that looks like, we needed to have more people at the table in different areas to offer, to offer some expertise. And so we have established this new committee this year. We met in August for our first retreat, led by Mr. Holberg. He identified three main goals that I have listed here for you that were shared with our committee and that we also discussed. The first area is really just, there's so much buzz about 21st century learning, and there's so many facets to it, that, you know, this committee is really going to take a look at what is 21st century learning, and what does it mean for Prior Lake? And how do we talk to our staff about that and educate them? So that's one of our goals, is to dig into that a little bit. The second goal is to look at what types of professional development do we need to offer in the area of 21st century teaching and learning for our staff and students? And the last area is, with the technology being a huge focus, we're looking for this committee of people to really kind of dabble in a lot of the different areas of technology, iPads being one of them, to figure out what's going to be the best way for us to have staff use the technology as well as the students in our district, and how we can integrate that into our teaching and what we're doing. And this committee will meet on a regular basis throughout the school year to continue to look at professional development and how we're using it during the school year.
Lastly, looking ahead for this first semester of the school year, we will have a half-day workshop and two early release days. And during that professional development time, staff across the district will be analyzing student data. At this point, we now have the MCA scores from last spring, which teachers would not have access to until now this fall. So specifically, their students' MCAs that came in this fall. And then we'll also be, at that first early release day, some schools will have already begun math testing, so they'll be able to look at that data as well, hopefully, in an attempt to better address the needs of the students that are currently in their classrooms. Staff will be setting goals for their professional development plans in the early part of the year, and then working through the year to reach that goal for themselves. Staff is encouraged to do those collaboratively, so working on a group goal. And all of those PDPs work towards district initiatives, so they're based on goals that the district already has, and as well as the buildings. As Sheila mentioned, the elementary teachers will be working on the National Geographic curriculum and math expressions training throughout that workshop day and those two early releases with the guidance of Amy Ketnan. And then lastly, at the secondary level, we'll be continuing the professional development work to develop those professional learning communities and building that strong foundation with the help of the PLC leadership team, which is representatives from departments across the district at the six-twelve levels. So that is everything. In a nutshell.
Are there any questions? Tom?
You said it's vertical six-twelve?
Uh huh.
I know that at one point, there's some issues with different levels of teaching, giving different turns to the same thing. So are you, it's six-twelve, but are you also including K-5 in some things, too? So it isn't, okay, you're down to fifth grade, here, go on.
We had, actually, last year, we had some transition meetings where there was an opportunity for the five, grades five and grades six teachers to meet, and to have that conversation, as well as grade eight and grade nine teachers having an opportunity to meet. Because it does get sort of divided into like K-5 and six-twelve, but, you know, the necessity for those shared conversations at those transition grade levels is also really important. So I know those conversations were very fruitful for those transition years, and those teachers who teach those grade levels to have that communication back and forth.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you for your report. Appreciate finding out what you're doing on those days when there's no kids in school. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next is the Bridges ALC enrollment and additional space, and I'll turn that over to you, Sue Ann.
Yes. I'll start that, John Bennett, if you want to come up to the microphone, I've been asking you about enrollment. John is our acting principal at Bridges ALC. This is our fourth year of operating Bridges, and each year, we've been amazed by the number of students that have come to us. Last year, throughout the year, we were asked, we were in a place where we had to cap our rooms, where we actually had a waiting list throughout the year. So we knew going into this year that a So we knew going into this year that a couple things. One, we had graduated a very large high school, senior class of forty-two students. And so, you know, those places had to be filled. So we kind of thought maybe we would start on the low side again this year and then build up. What we found the first day of school was a different story. And since then, the numbers have changed, as they do with ALCs. But generally, our first quarter is our slowest quarter. After that first set of grades come through, then students that aren't doing well at the high school can make a decision. I mean, if the attendance is off, if something's happening in the student's life, they have that other option there. And so that's when we generally get a pretty big influx of students. So, Mr. Bennett, would you tell us about enrollment so far this year?
Yes, thank you. We, as you might know, in an area learning center, the non-traditional kids that we service are non-traditional. And for us to understand what our enrollment is going to be, we have to see who shows up at the front door on the first day of school, or the third day of school, what have you. This year, we, as Dr. Gruber said, we did graduate about forty-two students last year, many of which have come back to visit us during the open house and so on, and many of them are going into post-secondary institutions, the services, or going into the workforce. And I don't think with, without the help of Bridges, that may have been happening. Again, we were a little bit nervous by graduating that many. We had forty-nine students return from last year that were underclassmen at the time, and twenty-nine new students showed up the very first day. So we opened with about seventy-five students the very first day of school, which is pretty exciting for us, but kind of made us a little nervous in that we have a cap of eighty students, which today alone, we had four new walk-ups and registration that will start tomorrow. Last year, we were at about Christmas break, or excuse me, the winter break, and we were at the cap there and had a large number of students that requested to be on a waiting list. And as students would graduate throughout the year and receive their diploma and get their credits, we would be able to add students at that time. I could foresee that we will be at our cap within five or six days, being at seventy-eight right now. We started with a dean slash teacher and three teachers and a half-time secretary. We're now at four full-time teachers, one of which works with our special ed students, a full-time special ed para, a full-time secretary support, and our dean slash teacher. So we're loaded to the kill, so to speak. We don't like to turn students around or away from where we're at. The word is out that it's a good place to go. Our graduation rate is a significant evidence of the success that we're having as a school and the success that these students are having, where they may not have even graduated or even thought about going back to school. We have multiple students that have been out of school for one or two years that have heard about Prior Lake's Bridges. And we started a twenty-year-old tomorrow with the hopes that we can get those credits and have him be successful. We did meet with the landlord today. They've been very helpful with us. We were very fortunate to find that building. We looked at multiple places. Mr. Anderson was one of those people from the board that represented the board, and we were very fortunate to find that. And since then, many of the businesses that was in the North Gate Center have not been, have left the building. We do have a room that is next to our four classrooms. We have three classrooms, an office, and a lab, a computer lab, for eighty students. And studies have shown that these types of students that need to have more one-on-one, more academic and social support, need to be in smaller classes. For many years, we had the focus program, a school within the school, at the high school, and our class limits there were never over ten. So at this point, right now, we're at an average class size of about seventeen students per hour, as high as twenty-two to a class in a social studies class. And the thing that does help us is that we do offer a work program, so some of our kids leave after their core classes to be able to go to work. But we have a person right next door to us. We have four classrooms and an office right next door, and an accountant who has had a good relationship with us and is willing to move from that position or that spot in front of the other vacant areas and allow us to look at the possibility of leasing that area. It would be very helpful to us because one of our things is security and making sure the kids are safe. If we were to have to take another front further down the mall, it would mean to be walking down the sidewalk in the winter and without a lot of supervision because there's more of them than us. And it would be a great opportunity. It's a room about the same size as our other classrooms. All of our classrooms have their own individual lavatories, and it also has an office space. Our teachers all share one office in a very small area, and they're sharing the same desks, the same computers, and so on. So that would free that up. And the bottom line is, allow us to have more students that are in great need of this type of facility.
In your work packet, we have quoted, we were actually looking at a different space down the walkway, but this space that is next door is twelve-hundred-and-fifty-four square feet, and the lease would be one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-three dollars per month. And this, as you recall, is a lease-living part of our funding. That's how we do the space there at North Gate. So Julie, do you want to speak to what that cost would be to our homeowners?
We talked about that the cost would be about twenty thousand dollars a year. It would be pennies a year to our taxpayers, for our individual taxpayers and homeowners. It was such a small amount on our lease, on our overall levy certification. And so it would really be just very, very little amount if any increase at all, simply because we know our levy is probably going to be stable this year.
So the recommendation before you tonight is to add one more classroom to the suite of rooms that Bridges has at this time. And then what do you think your capacity could be? Could you go beyond that eighty-five?
I would say ten to fifteen students.
So you're getting closer to what you're talking about.
Well, eighty-five to ninety students, which is significant.
Are we talking about just space here, or are we adding another teacher? Is this just a space recommendation?
Well, at this point, it's just a space. They would be able to move out, move around a little bit so that, right now, they're, the way they're using the room is a multipurpose room. Every room is a multipurpose room. So it would give them an ability to spread out and have the students not be all jammed into those three classrooms or four classrooms. So there would be an additional space for students and for staff. So at this point, until we get the numbers solidified and the budget worked out as far as the ALC budget, it would not require a staff member. And if it did, it would be, it would be cost-neutral, because the ALC students bring in funds, just like other students do, and those funds then pay for the teachers.
If I may add to that, one of our classes that we teach is a, it's a computer classes, online computer classes. Every hour, we have about seventeen students in the computer labs that are doing online classes. With the number of teachers that we have, there are classes that we can't offer. All of our teachers have variances. Our social studies teacher teaches Vi Ed also. Our dean teaches work program with a variance. Our math teacher teaches art with a variance and so on, and they do a fine job doing that. But one of the things they also do is supervise the computer lab, is one of their responsibilities for their five hours per the day. In the event that we could possibly brainstorm and think about hiring an hourly supervisor in there, that would free up those teachers each another hour available to teach and be able to use that classroom effectively.
So as those numbers solidify now, you know, if they come back up to eighty, once they get to there, then that's the next conversation to have, is how we would maximize the dollars that we have available to be able to meet the needs of those students.
Tom?
No, the variance, that's fairly standard with ALCs, correct?
Yes, the state is quite, I shouldn't say lenient, but they're understanding that we cannot have a teacher in every area of the curriculum and be licensed at that. But in the hiring process, that's one of the things we look for, for those teachers that have background. Last year, our social studies teacher taught Vi Ed, but he's also assistant track coach and assistant football coach, so he had a background in that, under the supervision of myself and the dean. But yes, variances are. In fact, before the shutdown, the state had on the table of just giving all area learning center teachers the ability to have a variance, because they understand the situation that the school district is in.
Tom, you want to finish, Tom?
Oh, yeah. The other thing is with the expand, being able to have more students, you said, or I think Dr. Gruber, you said that after the first quarter, there's some students at the high school that will want to go there. Will we have space for those students, within our own students in the district? Will they be able to go to the ALC?
That is, that is why we're attempting to do this, because we do have, we do have students, and they are typically identified with not being successful at the traditional high school. And we give them that choice to be there, and that's, we're trying to be a little proactive in the fact that we might be able to have that space and be able to tell those students that, yes, you can start with us, rather than get that long list of students again on a waiting list and then have to do this later.
Stacy? I just had a question, John, about, I know kids kind of come, you know, at different variance times, but do they also go out of the program at variance? I mean, you're saying graduation. So I guess my question is somewhat of a funding question as well. I mean, is there consistency in the funding as these new kids come in?
Funding for those students are based on the number of hours that they're attending the ALC. So it's not, it's not the same as a normal, as a regular student attending the high school.
Okay.
So it does depend on the number of hours. So when there's students that come in at different times during the year, it's based on the number of hours they're attending the ALC, and that's what we receive funding on.
Okay.
And traditionally, the type of students that we work with are somewhat transient at times, and they're there and then all of a sudden disappear. But we've had the luxury of having people waiting in the wings to replace those students.
And it seems like our retention rate is pretty good. I mean, we keep.
We were at eighty students last year, as I said, at the winter break, and we replaced students as they graduated or left the district.
We had eighty students, and we actually received revenue as if we had sixty-eight. So it's not that much lower, which is a really good sign that we are being consistent in filling those, you know, spots at the ALC.
Any other questions?
So what I'm requesting tonight is to add a classroom to the ALC, the space right next door, and that would be an additional twelve-hundred-and-fifty-four square feet at a cost of one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-three dollars.
Do I have a motion to accept that request or approve that request?
I'm going to motion.
Wait, Tom, a second. Stacy? Any other questions? Just clarification, so by adding this one, it will go, the whole building lease is only two more years, this year and next? So this will sunset at that same time?
Exactly.
Okay. Any other questions? I'll go ahead.
We also had an agreement with the building person, that the lease agent, that if next year we didn't need the space, that we could take it back. For some reason, we went down to thirty-five students, which we know won't happen, then he would have flexibility there. So we can look at this again, but my thought would be we would have this for the next two years only. And then we'll look at our, we'll be looking at that lease and deciding where we need to have our ALC for the future when this lease expires in two years.
Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven-zero. Thank you. AdSIS grant, Kate, is that done?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Gruber, members of the board. I wanted to give you a quick update on our AdSIS grant. MBE doesn't like us to call it a grant, but it's the easiest way to refer to it, so we'll go with that. This is our third year of participating in the AdSIS grant from MBE. The first year was grades K-2 in reading only. The second year was, which was last year, was K-2 and six, eight in reading, and grades four, eight in math, and we qualified for three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in funding from MBE. And this year, we are including grades nine. At the high school, two sections of grade nine and grades K through eight in reading. There are a number of sections in grade six through eight. And we are also including grades four through eight for math. And as you delineated on the summary that I gave you, we are having over twelve-hundred-and-fifty students participate in our AdSIS program this coming year. And in reading and/or math, they will participate above and beyond their core instruction in those areas. So they are getting an extra dosage of reading and math based upon their area of need, and we're carrying out interventions in those specific areas for those kids. And we are very pleased with the progress that we've seen thus far. What MBE, the message that MBE gives us is that they would like to see kids enter this program and exit this program. They don't want this as a continuing extra intervention for the students. This past school year, eleven, twelve, we had two-hundred-and-forty-one students in K-3 that exited the program. So those kids were getting extra doses of reading and math in those areas, and now they've exited the program and they're back in the general education curriculum without those extra doses of reading or math. So that's our intent, is that the past two years, we've had basically fifty percent of the students we've been serving have received significant or have achieved significant improvement. And significant improvement is synonymous with exiting the program. And so what we'd like to do is to increase that percentage in those fifty percent years. And a number of other goals that we were looking at include all related to student achievement, increasing the percentage of kids passing the MCAs. That's how the middle school kids exited the program, is if they passed the MCAs, they didn't have, they didn't, they were not required to take those reading or math classes. So that you would think that would be a big motivator for those kids, since it takes away from one of their electives. Over fifty middle school kids were able to achieve that last year. And again, part of this initiative is to decrease the referrals to special education. So if we can catch kids early, catch them upstream, get them in reading intervention, and help them be successful, we can hopefully get them back in general ed, keep them away from special education, and it's a win-win for everybody. We've surveyed parents in regards to their thoughts on the AdSIS program. Ninety-two percent of our parents were either satisfied, very satisfied, or extremely satisfied. Again, ninety-two percent of the parents noticed that there was an improved reading attitude with their kids. So that was great news, and it has helped us in regards to researching what is good for kids in the area of reading interventions. Math interventions across the state, it's not as well researched. But for reading, K-nine, we're real excited about moving forward this year and being able to reach these kids, and we'd like to see more than fifty percent of them go back to the general ed classroom. So that's a real quick Reader's Digest version of the AdSIS update.
Okay, are there any questions?
I have one.
Tom?
When they get through the AdSIS program and they're going back to the classroom and if they slip, or whatever, can they get back into the program?
They can. We're targeting those two-hundred-and-forty-one kids from the beginning of school so that we can review and see what their progress is in the general ed, so that we can also make sure that they don't slip back. We want to make sure that they're, when we book them, when they go back to general ed, they're ready to go and rejoin the general curriculum. So that's part of the data that we're collecting in regards to follow-up. So that's part of the data that we're collecting in regards to follow-up, also with those kids.
Any other questions?
Stacy? Um, the fifty percent that you're graduating out of the program, um, is that, I mean, I'm, I'm sure MBE wants to see a hundred percent, but is that relatively a good amount? I mean, I, I see us getting an increase in grant every year. So I mean, what's considered successful, I guess?
Across the state?
Yeah, across the state.
That's one of the questions we ask and, and, and part of that, part of what MBE is, is doing is part of their initiative is making it more consistent across the state because what we consider a measure of success might not be the same in other districts. The, the reading interventions are not necessarily the same district by district. And part of what we went through last year was a visit by MBE. They did site visits and part of MBE's intent is to, like I said, increase the consistency across that as far as common measures, common, uh, measurement systems. We use INES-Web. Different districts may use something different, so they're gauging their success based on a different instrument than we use. So it's hard, it's not comparing apples to apples. So it's hard to say what that gauge is like with other districts. So I'm not answering your question.
No, no, that's okay.
But I'm giving you a good reason why.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. That makes sense. That makes sense. I mean, we must be doing something, right, to keep giving us more money, so.
So there were previous to this year, for last school year, there were seventy-six districts that received this funding. And they actually reduced it down to fifty-two for this school year. So I guess we made the cut there. Um, there, and you can max out, the maximum amount of funding you can receive is five hundred thousand dollars. So for last school year, there were maybe eight districts in the state that were receiving more than we were. So this year, I'm thinking we're even closer in the top ten as far as the actual funding.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Doug. Uh, moving on, Jeff has a number of items here, starting with test scores.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Gruber. I'm here tonight to give a overview presentation of the two thousand twelve MCA, MCA two and three assessment data as well as a explanation of multiple measurements rating, the MMR, and the focus rating overview. That is new. Uh, this year, it's part of the state's new, uh, way of, for accountability. This is part of the state's waiver, uh, the alternative to complying with No Child Left Behind. And so this is the overview. I'll do a brief recap of the assessment scores, which I presented back in August. It is relative to how we segue to the MMR and the focus ratings, so, but it will be brief. We'll talk about those MMR and FR overviews, uh, in more detail, and then we'll talk about next steps. Our students are tested in reading and math in these grade levels, and we've always been testing and assessing students here over the past few years. The key thing that we've always been focusing on is proficiency. That's been what No Child Left Behind has been on, has been proficiency for all students, um, particularly in our subgroups too, by ethnicity, free and reduced price lunch, limited English proficiency, and special education. Proficiency is still part of Minnesota's new system. What has an increased focus in the new system is on student growth as well as achievement gap reduction. And not necessarily just in all students, but by specific subgroups that are listed up here as well as by individual students. So to foreshadow a little bit, you're, you're going to be hearing some information tonight about growth, achievement gap. You'll also be hearing me talk about the subgroups and how there's more of a, an onus on how we keep track of that data, how we follow that data, and, and how we use that data to make instructional decisions. Quite frankly, this is the type of data we need. This is what has been asked at this board, this board has asked. We, we've talked about cohort groups, we've talked about how kids compare from one year to the next. And it has been somewhat of a very difficult task to do that. To be able to add the student growth and achievement gap, we have more data that will allow us to be able to better directly answer those questions as well as put the types of things in place that students need for, for learning. The results, as I mentioned, this, these are the reading scores that I shared with you, uh, back in August. Just a couple noteworthy things that, uh, you should know. The second, or excuse me, the third column over, the two thousand twelve district percent of students proficient. Uh, it is a, a good threshold for the district in all grade levels to be at that eighty percent or above. I know in previous years, I, we've had some grade levels at seventy percent proficiency, but to see them all within that eighty percent and higher is a good place to be. By cohort, all cohorts have improved. We've seen increase with the exception of, of one, there, I believe there's one, um, there, that fifth to sixth grade, we saw a slight dip in the percentage of students, uh, proficient. Looking at individual schools, you see the breakdown. Students who are determined to be unproficient are represented in the categories of exceeds or meets. Uh, students that are partially meets or do not meet, those are students that are, are not considered proficient. And the goal is to shift those students over, to continue to move those students. And our goal in the past with proficiency has been focused on what do we do to have those students move to those, whether meets or exceeding standards. Uh, with the growth and achievement gap, it's not just about proficiency. We're going to be having conversations about all of those students, more focused about how do we get all students to continue to grow each and every year? And in some of those areas, how do we further minimize that achievement gap? District math scores, uh, very similar, just a couple things to, to share with you. These scores overall are very, quite strong compared to the state. Uh, this is a strong area, um, compared to, between how the district does relative to the state. Uh, there's one cohort group, the fourth to fifth grade, that showed a slight dip, but overall, um, scores are quite strong. Even at eleventh grade, we saw a slight dip there in, in student scores. That's a district, that's a, excuse me, a statewide trend. State, you know, all students, eleventh grade, those scores seem to take a dip a little bit. And I'll talk a little bit about what we're going to be doing, particularly with the eleventh grade here in some upcoming slides. Individual scores very, very similar. You can see the number of students who exceed as well as meet and the students that are in the partially, that does not meet category at all of our elementaries, middle school, and high school. And so now, moving forward to really where the rubber hits the road and the new system of the MMR and the focus rating. And in your packet, I shared with you kind of a couple sheets of definitions, which will be somewhat helpful. But I, I promise you, I've selected probably the most pertinent to this conversation. The state system for the multiple measurements rating scale is where they take, they look at student test results and they look at proficiency, student growth, achievement gap, and graduation rate. And schools earn points in each category and the percentage of points makes up their MMR score. Proficiency is further looked at by weighting the percentage of subgroups that make AYP or the size of the subgroup. So they're looking at the, the number of students that are in the free and reduced price lunch category, as an example, and how many of those students made adequate yearly progress. And they factor that into the weighting and proficiency. The focus rating definition, they take two of those four, proficiency and growth of those seven subgroups for which there is a, a noted achievement gap. And these are the areas that are listed there. So the schools receive two scores, an MMR score and, and an FR score for focus rating. Just a couple things to point out. And these are the district's MMR scores for two thousand and twelve. You'll notice that, uh, in the third column, the points possible is seventy-five. There's a reason why all elementary schools and middle schools have seventy-five points. Students do not graduate from elementary and middle school. And so the high school is the only building in the district that, uh, has a graduation rate quotient applied to it. So their points possible is out of a hundred. When you look at the points and you look at proficiency, growth, achievement gap, reduction scores, graduation, graduation rates, there's twenty-five points for each of those sections. So either seventy-five or out of a hundred. All schools in the district for proficiency receive the score of twenty-four point nine-nine or weighted score of twenty-four point nine-nine or twenty-four point four-nine percent, which is a big deal. We, we, we got the proficiency part down because that's what our focus has been the last several years. Where all of our schools, in looking at the results, the growth, the amount of group growth that students made as well as where we made some of the achievement gap, those are the two areas that we need to focus on as a district. To give you a little bit of sense of, of where our elementaries are, the, uh, growth and achievement gap are in the mid to high teens. Westwood and, uh, Redtail Ridge were in the low twenties for both of those quadrants. And so that's good news. Across our secondary, our, um, growth as well as our achievement gap reduction scores, those were slightly less. And one of the theories that we're looking at is, uh, elementary schools use map testing quite a bit regularly. That's a test that students take, and a big part of that is seeing where the growth is and how it gets students meet their growth targets. That is being used at the middle school, uh, but not as resoundingly or as completely as it has been in the elementary. So we need to take a look at the type of data that we're getting from the map test and see if there is a place for that, to look at that with our middle schools. We do not map test kids in the high school. That's, that's simply not, not typically what districts do. But to give you just that general sense there. The other thing I'd like to point out is in two thousand and twelve, there were four schools that were considered title schools. This is important because it's going to come back later in the presentation when I talk about the designations. Five Hogs, Greenwood, Redtail Ridge, and Westwood all received title funding in two thousand and twelve. And so that is important and, uh, you know, when, as you look at this, uh, all schools receive an MMR school, our score, all schools receive a, a focus rating score. But the designation pertains to, uh, if you're a title school or not. For the focus rating, again, the proficiency quotient for the proficiency score of all district, of all schools in the district was twenty-four point nine-nine. And so the gap, achievement gap reduction, you can see the difference here is that some of our schools do have to look at the achievement gap a little bit more closely in terms of the difference as well as, but some of our schools did quite well in terms of looking at proficiency and that achievement gap reduction relative to the number of points possible for the schools. The designations, um, No Child Left Behind focused on failing schools. That was one of the things that, that, that typically was, you know, kind of the hallmark of No Child Left Behind. The new state designation also does the flip side. It focuses or provides time, or provides a designation to reward schools. And there are two sets, there are two basically, uh, designations on the high side. There's a reward school, the highest performing fifteen percent of Title One schools in the state. Basically, schools will be identified every year based on being the top fifteen percent of their grade classification. So all elementary schools, you know, every year will be ranked. The top fifteen percent will be reward schools. The next, uh, for celebration status eligible, schools that fall between the sixtieth and eighty-six percentile of their grade classification group are eligible for what's called celebration status. They will have to submit an application to the state that kind of explains their quantitative and qualitative factors that make their school effective. That process is still being communicated out to districts, but it is an application process where the state will choose ten percent of the applications submitted and to be determined if they are celebration schools or have achieved that status. The bottom designations, continuous improvement, priority school and focus school, these are the bottom twenty-five percent. There are no schools in priority savagery schools that are in these three designations. That's a good thing, it's very good news. Where they are, we have two reward schools, Redtail Ridge and Westwood, and we have two schools, celebration status eligible, Five Hogs and Greenwood. As I mentioned, title schools, or schools that receive title funds, are the only schools that, uh, can qualify or will receive a designation. If you look back at the MMR schools, scores, you can see the other schools did quite well comparison or when you look at the Five Hogs scores and Greenwood's scores. But they do not receive those designations because they do not receive title funding. Yet the scores are just as important, and that's useful data for us in our educational plan. What's also important is that all of our schools that are eligible qualify for one or two, for, for both of these two designations. We want our schools to be either in the reward school category or the celebrations status category and not in the bottom three. So this is also good news. And finally, celebration status eligible schools will be going through the application process to submit, um, their quantitative and qualitative, uh, research or their analysis to see or to be selected for celebration status. So both Five Hogs and Greenwood will be going through that process. So the, these are things we want to see, uh, and this is good news as we look, as we look at these results. Our next steps, as I've mentioned, you, you, we've got proficiency down. You know, that has been kind of the hallmark of what we talked about. We're going to, and all schools have hit their proficiency targets. All of our subgroups have also hit their proficiency targets. That's also good news. The biggest thing that we need to look at is disaggregate that data more thoroughly and look at all of the different subgroups, look at where those students are at, talk about the targets that they need to achieve, and then set the plan to achieve it. When you look at disaggregating subgroups, it's a little bit more complex than just saying, let's look at our free and reduced price lunch kids, let's look at our, um, you know, black student population. Most students, all students fall into multiple categories. So to be able to try to find a clean category and how, you know, students may fall, they could hit into several different categories here. And that is where you've heard, uh, earlier this year, talking about the data warehouse, looking at that as a, as a possibility for the district. And the data warehouse, just as a quick review, is that repository where we have all the student data and we're able to generate reports. That is going to assist us in this analysis as well as looking at test scores and other data that the district collects to help us plan and to, uh, prepare for the statewide assessments. We're going to be looking more specifically at the achievement gap as well as, uh, growth targets and revisiting the map data and the correlation to the MCAs. Map and the, map testing and MCAs are different tests. They give us different data. We need to take another careful look at that because the correlation in the past has not been typically too strong. We've seen some holes in it. But also with that growth factor being put in there, we need to take another look at the map data to see how that can fit with our planning for the MCAs in order to get a better sense of the growth component.
Questions, discussion? Do you want to have questions? Lot of information. Be good to have the data warehouse, I guess.
That's good news.
Yeah, good news. Thank you. I think you're still up.
I am. In your board packet, you have the preliminary, uh, No, uh, ESEA No Child Left Behind allocations for title funding in the district. Usually, this is a document that's come before you, typically in midsummer. One of the reasons why it has been late is, as was alluded to earlier this evening, the, the census was just completed. Census is a huge determining foundation factor for the nation as well as the state allocation for federal funds. And so there was additional time that was needed, but as you can see from the, uh, from the history as well as what we're looking at in two thousand and twelve and two thousand and thirteen, combining Title One, Two-A, and Title Three, we're looking at a federal funds to the district of just a little bit, of three hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars. What's interesting or what should, is noteworthy is, as you've heard or as we've had discussions here in the, in the past year, our free and reduced price numbers, our, our students who qualify for free and reduced price lunch have increased. I'm, uh, you know, Ms. Sink and I were talking a little bit about with our numbers increasing and federal funds usually following that, I'm a little surprised to see, you know, the number a little less than last year, almost, uh, uh, approximately, quite a bit, actually, each from, from Title One, um, almost twenty-six thousand dollars. Now, looking at and following up with that, the state or nationally, when they redid the census numbers, they redistributed the. the census numbers, they redistributed the money. Minnesota's enrollment as a whole is down. And while, in a little bit, we'll be talking about enrollment in the district slightly being up for the district, there's less money coming to the state of Minnesota from the national level, because some of that money had to be diverted elsewhere. So, that's why we're seeing a little bit of a decrease. However, some of our percentages in last year of free and reduced price lunch qualifications did increase. So, we're still going to be providing that service, and for title. One other change with title, Westwood no longer qualifies for title funding, but Glendale Elementary will, is, did qualify for title services this year. So, this is for you to review, and seeking board approval to accept the funds.
Do I have a motion to accept the title funding?
So moved.
By Rich, second.
Second.
By Tom. Any comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven zero. Great.
I also have, in your board packet, a district curriculum advisory roster, that I would like to talk a little bit about. This is, this committee comes together, meets with me periodically, and we talk about all the good things in curriculum instruction and assessment, and things that are happening in the district. This is usually a group that hears, or hears presentations on those topics before they come to the board, for a formal board presentation, or for action, or for a first view. And so, this is a group that has board members on it, has parents, but also has teachers on it. In the past, we've had three board members on it. In the interim, it would appear that we now have four board members on the committee here, but that certainly, we'd have to be looking at this and planning ahead. We would have to be sensitive to that, so that we would not have a quorum at our meetings. But however, in the interest, I know Martha came on last year for her first year, and, you know, I kind of kept the group together, so I didn't want to point that out to you. As the group meets, we will have teacher reps on here. I'm still waiting for a couple of confirmations, but as topics do come up, additional teachers do come to the curriculum advisory to present the information that they're working on.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept approval of the district curriculum advisory committee?
So moved.
By Mike, second.
Second.
By Todd. Any comments or questions?
I've got one.
Yes.
I mean, I was struck by that also, and immediately thought about the quorum part, but, I mean, we've had the full board invited to other committee meetings as well, so, you know, what would really the issue be, as long as these are published, right? I mean...
If they're published meetings, they're open to the public to come, so it should be fine.
I mean, so when we've invited the full board to a, you know, building and grounds committee meeting, or a finance, you know, we've had more than four of those meetings as well, so I would assume that we've been legally okay there as well, or?
Supposedly, as long as it's published.
Is it always published?
We're not taking formal votes, those meetings are information.
Yeah. I mean, maybe it's worth a quick call to our attorney, just to make sure that we're not doing anything that we shouldn't be. Especially when, I mean, I'm more concerned, because I know in the past, we have invited the full board to other committee meetings, I think, thinking that everything was okay, so.
He can double check.
Yeah.
I think as far as, to your point, Mike, this is a group that, I think we don't, as far as decisions, it's just feedback to the people that are presenting, and is it ready to go to the board for a vote?
And I think the reason for that, though, usually, is that you don't get four people that have already made up their decision, and so it's a moot point when it gets to the full board. And I think that's the reason why, for all those committees, they don't want a quorum. But, you know, again, I would assume that, you know, if we've been able to do it in the past, that that's not, you know, preventing us, I guess. So, you know, maybe a legal opinion would be good on that. And if we get something one way or the other, then I guess we can think about what we need to do.
So, pending the okay of legal review. Right, MSBA would be our contact. Okay. Do I need to amend the motion? And who made it?
I think I made the motion.
And you're okay with that change?
I'm fine. I mean, you know, to me, it's, we're business as usual, and we've been on the opinion that it is, but it's probably, you know, bearing in mind our earlier comments from the survey results, we've got goodwill with the community, I want to make sure that we continue to act in the trust of the community, so.
So, you're okay with that change?
I think so.
And the second? Okay. Any other comments or questions? Yeah, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven zero.
Thank you very much.
Columbus State, Samia?
Yes. Each year, it seems like our school board meeting falls on Columbus State, so we each year ask out of the board to have a roll call vote regarding a resolution pertaining Columbus State, that we agree that Columbus State not be considered a holiday, and then we hold our regularly scheduled school board meetings, like it's on that evening. So, I need a motion, and then a second, and then a roll call vote, in order for this to happen. It's on page 143 of your packet.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the resolution relating to Columbus State?
So moved.
By Stacy, second.
Second.
By Tom. Any comments or questions? Okay, roll call vote. Martha?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Moving on to the approval of a Constitution Week proclamation.
Yes, and on this, we have a Constitution Week proclamation, which can be found on page 144.
Do you want me to read that?
Yeah.
Constitution Week 2012 proclamation. Whereas September 17th, 2012 marks the 225th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America at the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting improper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and where it is fitting improper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and now therefore, we, the school board of Prior Lake Savagery Schools, do hereby proclaim September 17th to the 23rd, 2012, to be Constitution Week within the Prior Lake Savagery School District. I urge all citizens to join me in recognizing Constitution Week, to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution, to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787. In official recognition whereof, I hereby affix my signature this 10th day of September 2012. Okay, do I have a motion to approve this resolution? Or proclamation, I'm sorry, for Constitution Week?
Make a motion.
By Mike, second. By Stacy, any comments or questions? This is also a roll call vote. Martha?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Say aye. Mike?
Aye.
Todd, Tom?
Aye.
Sorry. That motion passes seven zero. We'll move on to enrollment update and staffing.
I'm going to start with Julie, who's going to share with us our enrollment update and
Last June, when we approved the budget, we approved the budget based on 7,094 students, so almost 7,100 students. And that was in June, and that was what we knew at the time, we had four student population. And since that time, we've had a significant increase at all levels in the district for our enrollment. If you look at just kindergarten, we were anticipating about 475 in June. We actually are sitting at 516 at this time. So, that's an additional 41 students in our kindergarten, for grades one through five. In June, we were at 2579, we're now at 2626. So, there's an additional almost 50 students there as well. Our middle school, we actually anticipated that they would decrease a little bit. They're up about 10 students from where they were last year, but overall, 20 students. But if you ask them, they've had a really rotation of new students in, and others moving out of the district. But overall, increase of 20. And at the high school, this number is an interesting number. We were at 2322 in June, we're at 2368. But I'm not including our PSEO students in this number. Or I should say, I'm only including half of our part-time PSEO students. If you look, we have currently 43 students that are at the high school that are enrolled full-time, PSEO, and 71 part-time. And so, I'm only including about 40 part-time students. But those students are actually, those 71 students are actually in the building at some time every day. They may be out for the majority of the day, and only coming back for, like, a band or a choir. Or they may be just taking some advanced course at a post-secondary school, and coming back for the majority of the day. So, to be a little bit on the conservative side, I've taken only half those students for half of the day, and anticipating that we will just receive funding for that amount of their day. And so, we actually have about 31 more students than we're showing here, they're actually at the high school at this time. So, our numbers are up significantly, just from June, which is something that we really weren't anticipating would happen. We know, and we kind of thought that district was declining a little bit slowly. We were hoping we would be steady, and here we are, actually increasing almost 155, 154 students is where we're at right now, from June until today, actually. I know, I just heard Mr. Bennett saying that we had four more additional enroll at the ALC today, which I don't have on my sheet. So, those are the things that are happening so quickly, in and out, all the time. We started at the beginning of the, on Tuesday, last Tuesday, we actually dropped, which we anticipate we dropped, about 30 students, but we always don't know, especially at those upper levels, how many students have moved in the district, and so, we don't always receive that paperwork right away. And so, we always anticipate that we'll have somewhat of a drop that first couple weeks. And that's why the department always asks us for an October 1 count. They really feel like that September month is really a lot of students knowing where they're going to school. Are they at our district, are they sharing time, are they at the PSEO? By October 1, we usually have pretty solid numbers that we're willing to be. And just as another note, our district is one that we, once we have the kids in our district, they very rarely leave. Our decrease, you normally see a five to eight, even a 10% decrease in enrollment throughout the year. We're at one and a half to maybe 2% that we decrease all year long. And so, that's a really steady number, that we can be pretty confident, when we have the kids in our district, they're going to stay here. Any questions about our enrollment?
Any questions? No? Okay.
The second part of this presentation has to do with our current staffing. And I spent a major part of last week visiting with administrators from kindergarten through 12th grade, looking at the numbers. Some of them were very unfriendly, and some opportunities are there for us to very safely add some extra staffing. Because of the lateness of the students arriving, in many cases, we weren't able to add sections, but what I have proposed is in your packet, is that we add paraprofessional support at the elementary level, at kindergarten specifically, at Edgewood. There, we added a section in their afternoon, and then, of course, the morning numbers went up to 24. So, we, I would, they would be very happy with adding two part-time, three-hour paras to support all four of those classrooms in the morning. They're 23, 24 right now, so there's not much difference, but that would give them support during those key instructional times on math and reading, and that preparation. At Glendale, their numbers went to 24, 24, 24. Students arrived the first day, or the first two days, as we were getting into school. And because of the grade level, and you'll hear this throughout our elementary discussion, it's very hard to add a classroom teacher after the students have met that. Their homeroom teacher, they've made best friends, they love their teacher, and they don't want to make a change, nor does the teacher want to do that to them. So, their recommendation is to add a paraprofessional to each of those classrooms, knowing that they can still receive students as they go through this school year. Mr. Bell at Five Hogs had classrooms of 24, 25 last year. I think 25 is probably the max, but, you know, we have some wiggle room there for them to grow a little bit if they do, if students move into their area, or residence. We wouldn't take any open enrollment in those, in that kindergarten classroom, however. And then, at Five Hogs, we added already one paraprofessional, and they're currently sitting at 24, 23. What I would like to suggest is that we don't do anything right now, but then I have the authority to add another paraprofessional, if his numbers go up to 24, 25. And he's had word from neighbors, in that neighborhood chat, that there are people moving into a couple of his neighborhoods with kindergarten students. So, that would be on hold for right now, but would happen, I'm just putting it, I'm glumping it all together for you, so I'm not coming back every month asking for more staffing. The one place where we could add a teacher is at Sage Academy, the school within the school at Westwood. Their numbers are very strange this year, in that, the good news is that they're getting to that 100 mark, as we've been growing this school, this Sage Academy over the last three years. We've really been looking to get to that 100 mark, and we're there. But we have 36 in 3rd grade, 29 in 4th grade, and 35 in 5th grade. And so, what the teachers and administration have done is really departmentalized their programs, so that the students have the benefit of two teachers. And by adding one more teacher into this mix, they'll be able to really individualize and personalize that program, and continue to grow it. Because we're at a point now where we have enough spaces, but not enough for one more student. And we'd like to continue to grow that throughout the year, and into next year. So, my recommendation there is to add a full-time teacher, and they can do that without adding a homeroom, by some creative regrouping of the students for content areas. And then, at the middle schools, we thought we were all set. We, in June, and Sasha's here can speak to this, they had a recommendation to add a .2 FTE for their algebra concepts classes. And wouldn't you know that, as we go through the summer, that those sections have grown by 23 newly enrolled 8th grade students to their middle schools? So, they currently have 99 students enrolled in those classes, and by adding one more section, they would be able to really reduce the number of students in those classrooms, really giving them the support that they need, because it's a remedial class to really get those students up to par, and have that growth that Jeff was speaking to with MMR tests, really evident in the coming year. So, they're requesting a .2 FTE, just for the algebra concepts. Then, at the high school, it always is interesting there, because we don't have a lot of space, but the number one priority, if there is a number one, and certainly, it's hard to figure that out some days, but when we sat down and talked it through, it was really 9th grade science, where our classes are, the size of our class is our biggest concern. And by adding a section of 9th grade science and biology, it would be a .15 FTE for each of these classes, for a .3 FTE total, and we have the staff to be able to do that. That would ease some of those class sizes at the 9th grade in science. So, the total recommendation is for certified staff, 1.5 at $93,750, and then six paraprofessionals maximum. That's if there is growth at Five Hogs, and that would be 87,500, with a total request of $181,150. And as Julia said, our numbers are up, and she feels confident that we can certainly support this recommendation from the general fund.
Okay, does anyone have any questions? Rich?
I was looking at the number in 4th and 5th grade of, like, Five Hogs and Glendale. We're up 2830, that's very high.
Well, it is high. And if you look at every building, there is going to be one grade level that's going to have what I fondly refer to as unfriendly numbers. When we gave the staffing to the principals, we said, here's the staffing that you can have, make it work. So, in those instances where you see 30, 31, you'll see also some class sizes of 22 to 24, where they've made it an addition based on their best recommendations on what's necessary for students to learn. So, I went back to them and asked them about how their 4th and 5th grades are doing, they're doing just fine. And they would... And they would rather stay as they are at this point, because in reality, we're not going to have a class of twenty-one or twenty in fifth grade and twenty-four, twenty-five in second grade. So you, you, we know that as the students get older, they can, they can deal with larger class sizes. And although we prefer to have them all at the twenty-four, twenty-five range in that higher elementary, it doesn't always happen. There are a few buildings that their numbers are just friendly all the way through, and that happens every year. But there are also years where that doesn't happen. And when I, and specifically at Glendale, when I was speaking with Sam, his first concern was those kindergarten students. Number one, the kindergarten students. And he also has a space issue in his building. He's filled, filled up those spaces with other programs. For instance, he has Title I now, needed a space for Title I. He's feeling like this is, this was his highest priority, and he would prefer to have it placed in kindergarten with parents.
Are there any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve this staffing request?
Second.
It's a hot second?
I'll second it.
By Mike? Any questions? Hey, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven-zero. Policy. And I see Gina in the back, so if she'd like to come up. This is a first reading, actually, it's a, is it the second reading? It is the second reading.
Yeah, I went to the workshop at one point, and we kind of presented some stuff, but this is the first reading, kind of revise some things a little bit. If you want to look at the, we're not doing anything to the policy nine-oh-two itself. This is to the addendum, which is the guidelines and procedures for facility use. There's only two pages that are really affected by it. Page four is just taking some verbiage off of our policy eight-oh-nine and adding on to it. It's just about vehicles and parking and, and that. So it's just a minor add-on from another policy we've had in the district, just explaining that a little bit. Page six is where most of the adjustments are taking place. If you look at the top in the fees, there are a few increases in the lecture hall, the gym, and the pool. And basically what I do every year is look across the about twelve to fifteen different districts within the metro, and I try to keep us kind of at the, the mid-range per fees and based on those areas that is bringing us up to a mid-range. So that was the recommendation for increases for those rooms. If you go down into the area that says additional fees for facility use and grounds, there are some, a few different changes in there. One of these was pertaining to something I discussed at a work, board workshop, what we're trying to do outside maintenance has costs that they incur for when field use happens every week, there's basically garbage that up and above what our use is as a school district, that they're incurring costs, they're incurring per labor, costs they're incurring for an extra dumpster pickup or whatever. So what we're trying to do is recoup some of that cost back to outside maintenance, so that's not going back to the district. So basically, there's twenty-seven fields that are regularly used during the summer or spring fall season by outside groups. And when we came to the cost between, there's about two yards of garbage a week, and there's about five hours of outside maintenance that are put into it, it comes to about two hundred dollars a week. That is, is basically up and above, that's being consumed. So what we're trying to do is recoup that cost back. We divided it by the number of fields that are typically used. It came down to eight dollars a week. So what you see on here, the field garbage and maintenance fee, eight dollars per week is what would be charged for an association or somebody that would use a field, you know, on a regular basis during the season. Snow plowing, that's been a charge that's always been in there, but this is, just makes it more prevalent. So if an outside user is reading this, they're aware of it, see that it may apply. Field lights, I met with City of Savage, City of Prior Lake, we're trying to have some consistency in our costs when it comes to outside use. Right now, City Savage charges twenty dollars an hour for light use. The bulbs and the, having to go up and replace those bulbs is relatively expensive to do. So if we do have some light usage, we want to be able to replace the bulbs, pay for the staffing, that kind of thing for when they are used. Typically, our only field that's used is Laker Field on occasion. This is pretty much in line with what City of Savage and City of Prior Lake charges at twenty dollars an hour. And the other addition is the credit card processing fee. I do have occasions where we do have people wanting to use credit cards, and that's a typical three percent that we get charged by your bank or your outside card user. But those are the main, the main things that I'm looking to revise on this. Is there any questions offhand?
Gina, would you speak to the meetings that you held after the meeting with the four and who you met with to get to these numbers?
Yep. I, first of all, we, I came to the workshop and we were kind of, you know, I'm talking to outside maintenance and to Jim at the time, we're just kind of looking for a way to, to recoup some of this. The decision that what came out of the workshop was to go and meet with the cities and kind of have a consistency on, you know, so we're, we're not over what they are, they're not over what we are. So I sat down with Angie Barstedt, City of Prior Lake, and Kristiill, who is City of Savage, met with them. I know Darrell's looking at, we don't do lining as much for our fields. If we do, we're, we're changing ours, they do like a per feet, lineal per feet, and ours is going to be changed to that as well. That's kind of what they do. But then we also looked at these lighting fees. As far as garbage fees for city, they kind of factor that in because they get used from neighborhoods and different things like that. That's something that the district doesn't get. Ours is more sports fields. So after meeting with them, this is kind of what we looked at as far as to give us a little more consistency and also, like I said, so we wouldn't incur costs up and above for when we have these groups that come and use a field. When we do have tournaments, there's sometimes we get one-time tournaments that come in basically for an extra dumpster pickup. It's about a hundred and fifty dollars so for that weekend to have a extra pickup. So that is where that charge came from. And Jim and Darrell both kind of gave me information they, for, it's for two yards from the, they called the sanitation place that we use or the facility, and it's thirty-five dollars for two yards is basically it. And then the, the labor fee is based on time and a half for what the guys are doing up and above to go and collect that.
Anyone have any questions?
Well, I mean, I'll reiterate that, you know, because I think I was one that asked about the field charges because, you know, we've got youth programs that use not only the school fields, but also the city fields. And so if we're going to create a situation where it's cost advantage to go to one or the other, I think there's going to create issues within the community. And, and I think that's a, a big concern that you'll find from any of the sports programs, be it, you know, softball, baseball, soccer, lacrosse, that, that, you know, all of a sudden, you know, there's going to be, I think, if there haven't been issues in the past, even more so. So I, I, I think we need to be very aware of that, quite honestly, of, of what the unintended consequence of doing this could be. Because I know when the new pool was opened, that there were several meetings that I got to attend as a result of that with different community groups having different desires and wishes, so, you know, passion comes to the surface on these things.
And my understanding is that we are being consistent with the other cities and we are not charging fees that are going to profit?
No, this is just to recoup cost only. This isn't an up and above. Well, basically, I know that City Savage, like they'll do a setup fee before a tournament, so they factor their labor in, and a lot of their fees are based on the dragging and the lining and those kind of things when they, and like I said, right now, our costs, since our, we only have so many outside maintenance people that are able to do that function, so our costs can be a little bit higher because our guys are getting time and a half because it's usually beyond their normal day that they have to drag and line. The city has regular staffing that come on and do dragging and lining, so theirs has been a little bit less expensive. So what they're doing is a lot of the city people are lining fields, we're not doing that part of it. So the only thing we're trying to recoup that we're not getting in anything is, is like I said, the garbage fee, the, the other stuff. The city factors in their per foot that they do, whether it's Prior Lake or Savage, they factor in the, the labor costs, the supply costs, and do some of that. But they do have regular pickups as part of their budget for, because their community function versus school function.
And I believe the comment I've made before is, I don't think you'll find any program that will have any issues paying for the true incremental cost of using the, the, the fields at all. But certainly whenever we've gone to the community to ask for additional funds, bonding to build a building and everything, the ability for those community groups, which I think are usually our priority too, which are, you know, the students of the district, quite honestly, but in a, in a after-school setting, that's one of the things that sold is that they'll have access to the, you know, especially the fields. But, you know, and, and so I don't think that there's going to be any challenges as long as it's truly, these are costs that if those activities weren't being held, that we're asking those programs to fund. And so as long as that's the case, I think, I, I think there, there really shouldn't be huge issues. It's when, you know, I think some of the things we saw the first time around that I think was a little bit nervous on my part, quite honestly, but I, I'm happy that you went back and, and spoke, and, and it looks like these, I think, are quite reasonable.
Yeah, and this is, like I said, this is just eight dollars per week, per field. So we were looking at participant cost before, but this will be more of an exact, so it'll serve the exact purposes therefore, it'll be to collect back for that.
I appreciate all your efforts, extra time on this.
Thank you.
This is a first reading, so you'll have time to look at it. If you have any questions, if you get back to Stacy or myself or Sue Ann, so that we can present it at the next meeting for the second reading, that would be appreciated. Moving on then to the annual and mandatory policies. This is something that needs to be done on an annual basis. And all of the policies that are listed on here have either been reviewed and approved through two readings, or there were no changes to them on the list. And the policy committee would like to make the recommendation that we do one reading and approve them this evening, as they've already had second readings if there was a change, otherwise there was no change. So if everyone is okay with that, I would take a motion to approve the policies for annual and mandatory listings. Hi Stacy? Second? Hi Tom? Any comments or questions? Yeah, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those policies are approved. Thank you. I do administrative reports. Sue Ann?
Yes, and it is my pleasure to introduce Dylan Jackson, who is our student representative to the school board. We're excited to have you with us this year, continuing our tradition of student participation on our school board, and we'll be asking for your comments often as, as items come up that impact high school or impact students. And certainly the school board will be asking you questions often, sometimes on different topics. So we'll look forward to your reports kind of on a quarterly basis as we move forward. So welcome, Dylan. He is the school council president, and as we continue to be moving that forward, that person sits on the school board. Welcome, we're glad to have you here. Also new to our district is Jacob, Jacob Makarsky, who is our reporter, sitting here for the Prior Lake American. Jacob replaces Marion Fuquer, who left for a different position, and we're excited to have Jacob here. So welcome to our district and to your press table.
Thank you.
Our school year has gone off to a very smooth start. Yes, we've had more students than we anticipated. That's always a wonderful situation to try to resolve. And I'm very pleased that we've added the support that we have to the classrooms in question throughout our district as we move forward. But also with that, that was one of the triggers for us to think about our growth task force recompeting. We had thought about two thousand thirteen, unless a couple of things happened. And one of them was that we saw some significant growth in our student body. Our kindergarten numbers moving from four sixty-five to five fourteen in one year certainly is significant. Our growth at the middle school, where we expected it to decline, and also growth at the elementary, where we also thought we were going to see a little bit of decline, certainly is telling us that in Prior Lake Savagery schools, our enrollment is healthy and moving in a positive direction. So I would, will be working to bring a demographic study together to be commissioned and to set the stage for recompeting that growth task force in January, late January, early February, with giving them then eighteen months. I'll be looking at the ALC and space for that in two years, as well as the ongoing needs of our district and of our high school as we look at the enrollment and the enrollment population as it's continuing to grow. So that will be happening this fall. And then, starting this week, we'll begin going out into the public. On Wednesday, Lee and I will be at the Optimus Club meeting. I'll be sharing what's new in our schools with that group. Later this fall, I'll be talking to the Prior Lake Chamber, and welcome board members to join me at any one of those events. You're certainly welcome to come and, and share the fun. Last week was the Math Task Force golf tournament, and we've had a presence there every year. We did this year as well. And in a, next month is the Laker Educational Foundation and the Prior Lake Chamber Combined Golf Tournament, so to raise money for our schools, and we're looking forward to having participation by school board members, as well as administration and families at, at that event. This year, we're also going to be doing a website redesign process. It's time for our website to be revised and upgraded, and we'll be working with school wires as our contract with them expires in June to determine which, which, which company would use to help us with that. One last thing is that Protus and Wookiee Call have been in the news in the Twin Cities in epidemic proportion. So we wanted to let our families know, since, since August, we've been sending out newsletters and information to our families regarding, making awareness of a parent's part of the signs and symptoms of those, and also will continue to do that. And lastly, I just want to mention that Constitution Week begins on September seventeenth, and we've just heard the approval of proclamation. But I want you to know that in all of our schools, Constitution Week is a very big deal, and that there are programs that go on specifically about Constitution Week as our teachers prepare our students to really understand the importance of this special week. So I'll be giving a report on that at our next board meeting, what happened. So I wanted you to know that that is happening, and we're looking forward to that beginning next Monday. And that is all.
Okay. Are there, oh, administrative reports. Julie?
I do have one, just a small report on the levy certification. I did receive the preliminary levy certification today. We were able to download it from the MDU website today, and at first glance, it looks sort of favorable, but as you know, there are many revisions that happen with our levy certification as more information is gathered from the Department of Education. Our goal in the past is always to remain and have a steady levy certification, and going forward and looking at our deferred maintenance items and those things, we're still hoping that we're able to do that for the future. I will bring the preliminary levy information to the finance committee meeting next Monday at five o'clock, and then it will come forward to the full board for a preliminary, to have an approval for a preliminary levy certification at the September twenty-four board meeting. The final levy certification will be in December. So just remember that it's just a preliminary certification in September. And that's all I have.
Are there any other administrative reports? Okay. Any board reports? Dylan, do you have anything to say about what's going on at the high school yet?
Not at all.
Okay. All right. So I guess I need to clarify under future events then. On our agenda, it says full board invited at seven AM. That's not true? September seventeen? Okay.
The seven AM meeting is a facility The 7:00 AM meeting is a facility committee meeting of the facility committee, and the full board is invited. And at 5:00, there'll be a finance committee meeting on Monday, and then the full board's invited if they wish to come.
Okay.
They're not required to come, it's just an invitation. If you wish to come, you're certainly welcome to sit and listen to the presentations.
Okay. So those are the first two items. Other future events, September 17th as well as the Fall Community Fest at the high school starting at 6:00. And as referred to earlier, it's Constitution Day and it will continue to be Constitution Week. September 24th is our next meeting. It will be a board study session at 6:00, and we will be opening it up for a short meeting during that time. Homecoming's coming up the first week in October, and then our next regular board meeting, televised meeting, will be October 8th at 7:00 here. With no other business, is there a motion?
Okay, Dylan, what is duck, da, or dodge, duck, and donate? Do we know what that is?
October 5th, dodge, duck, and donate after homecoming football game. I'm not sure what that is.
Is that dodgeball?
It is dodgeball. And Wolf Ridge will actually be organizing and running that event that the Laker Educational Foundation did a few years ago. I remember Mark Hoover having her car full of dodge balls as she went across the Twin Cities trying to find enough. It was one of the favorite nights of my career is watching children figure out that there were no rules. All they had to do was get a ball and throw it, kick it, or punt it, or whatever they wanted to do with it. And at the end of the night, whoever held the ball went home with it.
Wow.
Wow. It was really special. Now, how they'll make it special this time, we'll wait and see. But it is being run as a fundraiser for Wolf Ridge this year, as part of the Laker Educational Foundation.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn? By Stacy, second.
Second.
By Tom. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed? That motion carries 7-0. Thank you.
Martha, we used to have short meetings. We used to have short, we used to have short meetings. You're the only variable.
Sorry, that's what I'm used to.
Payback for the last one. Payback.
I saw the last one was like 33 minutes long.
We're efficient.